Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919. When he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, (548) 0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Tonight is Monday, October 16th. If you all please join me first in the Fledgial Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to make a couple of announcements as we begin tonight. First of all, David Bragger has some medical issues, and hopefully his recovery will be swift, and he will be able to be back with us as soon as possible. The second is, I'd like to acknowledge and take a quick moment of silence for a couple of folks that passed away in the last two weeks since we met. A youth who graduated from our high school, A.J. Fernandez, as well as a longtime member of the EDIC, Dick Campbell, who passed away this past week as well. So we can take a moment of silence for both of those individuals. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. First up tonight is Wetlands hearing. Darrellan and Janice Cugini, and it's 35 Childs River Road, East Falmouth, for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Bosselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. We're here tonight seeking a special permit to construct a residential pier at the property referenced in the application. I'm joined here tonight by Mr. Cugini. He's in the audience if there's any specific questions. The Cuginis recently acquired this property, and they have two boats. And the property currently has a single-family dwelling and the typical landscaping and appurtenances you'd expect a property on the water to have, including, in this case, an existing licensed docking facility, which is actually, in this case, a wharf, that's meaning that it's like a timber bulkhead that's parallel to shore, instead of what you typically see, which are residential docks that are perpendicular to shore. The problem with the existing structure, which was actually rebuilt about six or seven years ago, is that the water depth alongside is not sufficient for typical boats. The water depth varies, but in many cases, it's, in all cases, it's actually less than three feet, which is a minimum typical required water depth by Conservation Commission. In the case of the vessels that Mr. Cugini owns, is simply not adequate water depth. So we looked at different alternatives. One was to dredge, to create the water depth, and the other alternative was to simply build a more traditional dock perpendicular to the existing wharf, which is what we're proposing. And that typical dock is a four-foot wide walkway that terminates at the end, slightly wider to six feet, and the idea would be to tie the two vessels, one on each side. On one, on one side, we're proposing to have a power lift so that it can be lifted out of the water so that it, the bottom doesn't get growth on it, and that it's, can be kept clean. And the other would be an opportunity for the other smaller vessel that the Cuginis own. It's typical timber construction. Piles are driven, and if this is approved, the place where the two boats would dock would be insufficient water, it'd be in excess of three feet. The boats would tie bow first towards land, and the sterns would be out in well, well, water much deeper than three feet, or certainly deeper than three feet. The Falmouth Conservation Commission reviewed this project and granted a favorable order of conditions, and that should be in your file. We meet all the standards of the Falmouth Conservation Commission. There were no significant quantities of shellfish. We, we worked with the Harbor Master to make sure there were no issues with navigation. So we believe that this is an approvable application, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Pat?
Yes. It's unusual to have the Conservation Commission approve two boats. Usually, they only approve one. Could you describe the, the length of the boat and the power of each one?
I think Mr. Cugini would be better.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darryl Cugini. One of them's just a 42-foot powerboat, and the other one's just a smaller 18-foot boat, power.
Okay, and is, and the one that will be on the lift?
Yes.
Will be the...
That'd be the larger one.
The larger boat will be on the lift?
Yes, correct.
Do you, do you expect that you will have it on the lift at all times, except when it's in use?
I would like to, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, members of the board?
I guess back to that.
Sure.
The 42-foot boat you said would be on the lift?
Yes.
It's a 16-foot lift, so it's gonna be 26 feet extending outside the lift, mostly forward.
Did you say 42 foot or 22 foot?
Forty-two.
Forty-two foot.
So most of you, it's gonna be centered basically on the lift, some sticking out into the water and some sticking in towards your property. Is that correct?
Correct. Majority of it would be forward.
Majority of it would be towards land. The, the bulk of the bow, if you will, would be towards land.
Just so I can read something into the record from the Harbor Master's inspection report. Navigation issues not observed at the time of the review. The original dock was 62 feet. At the department's request, the applicant reduced the dock to 50 feet. I might add that, looking through the reports, that the bulkhead was a licensed dock before. So this is less impact on the waterfront and a benefit to the environment. So...
Go ahead, Doug.
One question. Are there any restrictions? I was trying to find it, and I have not been able to. Is there additional boats being allowed there, or is it very strict that it's just those two boats?
We specified in the public hearing before the Conservation Commission, and we actually put on the plan, if you look at the plan, there's a note that says, "No dockage alongside."
At the bulkhead, right.
At the bulkhead, so it's limited to only two boats.
Okay.
Someone look at this? A bigger one?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Any moorings need to be moved, or the existing moorings there will remain?
We showed the moorings on the plan. In fact, they're the black circles.
Correct.
And when we met with the Harbor Master, it was determined that there's none that are in conflict, so none have to be moved.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Any public comment? Any additional questions from anybody? So I'd look for a motion to approve.
I move approval of the site plan dated June 5th, 2012, as prepared by Falmouth Engineering for the address 35 Childs River Road.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? I'd have it. Thank you. Yeah, if everyone can sign that, it'd be great. Next up is to affirm the appointment of our Finance Director and a waiver for residency. I'm gonna let Mr. Suso handle this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my great pleasure to recommend to the board, following a lengthy search process, an interview process, recommend the appointment of Ms. Jennifer Petit as the first Finance Director for the town of Falmouth. Ms. Petit brings a very strong background and experience as a Finance Director in two other Massachusetts municipalities, including her current position as Director of Finance for the town of Hanover. The board has received a copy of Ms. Petit's resume, and also another copy of the Finance Director job description as background. She led a very significant field of applicants for this first Finance Director position for the town, and was the unanimous preferred candidate following the interview process. I do want to thank my colleagues for their expertise and guidance in serving on the interview panel, those including past Finance Committee Chair Gary Anderson, School Superintendent Mark Dupuy, retired Massachusetts Municipal Finance Director, and also our temporary Town Consulting Finance Director, Tony Terese, who the board has also met, my colleague Heather Harper, my colleagues Heather Harper and Denise Coleman, for their expert assistance in that regard. And I'm pleased to have Ms. Jennifer Petit with us here this evening, Mr. Chairman. I am also asking, of course, for the board's consideration of a waiver of residency for her, as she is a resident of the neighboring town of Sandwich. And I appreciate your important consideration in regard to these recommendations. And Jennifer's with us and prepared to make some, a few comments, if that would be in order, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, or answer any questions that you may have. Jennifer, welcome.
Jennifer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am truly honored to be chosen as Falmouth's first Finance Director, and I want to thank everybody that was on the interviewing committee, and people that I have met, and I just can't wait to get started. And I look forward to working with everyone, and I'm here to answer any questions anybody may have.
Before I ask any questions or open to the board, I'd like to welcome you to the community. It appears that you are used to this community because you worked here in the past. It's great to, to know that the community treated you well enough that you wanted to return. I have spoken to many of the folks who were on the interviewing committee, and you were by, by far their top choice. And I know the Finance Committee is dying for you to get started. And they've been kicking and screaming, looking for the actual appointment, but I think we took the right steps in going through the process slowly, methodically, and make sure that we had the person with the right fit. And I, after speaking with the town manager and the folks on the committee, I think that you'll be a great fit for the town of Falmouth. As a reminder to folks out there, our former selectman is your current boss, Troy Clarkson, so I hope he'll speak to us in the streets, because we took one of his brightest and best. But on behalf of myself and the board, I'd like to welcome you, and then I'd like to open it up to other questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
No questions, but just a reiteration, I think, of what the chairman has said. It's great to have someone who knew Falmouth, got some experience, went and got more experience, and then wanted to come back. And I, we couldn't be happier to have someone who knows us well, but also is willing to use her expertise to help the town.
Yes. Well, I have known Jennifer since she worked here, back in the, at least the early '90s, I think, if not even before that, and followed her career through all those years, and couldn't be more delighted that you are here and back here as the Finance Director. So we certainly welcome you, and we're pleased that you accepted the position.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? I'd like to welcome you and thank you for your...
Yes, great.
So I'll make a motion to affirm the appointment of Jennifer Petit?
Petit.
As the Finance Director. I think we should do those two separate motions.
Okay.
In a second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? I'd have it. Welcome.
Thank you.
Motion to waive the residency requirement?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just happy to waive the residency, but encourage Jennifer to consider. We're hoping she's gonna have this drawn for a long time, and I consider moving to Falmouth.
Great, okay. So a motion in a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? I'd have it. Welcome. Thank you. Do we have an anticipated start date?
The anticipated date's Monday, November 19th, Mr. Chairman, and Jennifer has some transitional issues that understandably she's working forward through as a professional in Hanover currently, and there's some possibility, we're hoping she may be able to join us for perhaps one of the nights of town meeting, if things could come together and things get freed up prior to the 19th. But we're working out those details as we speak, but the 19th is the operative date we're looking at at this point.
Great. And the board will hope next week that we'll come out with a budget policy statement, so when you come on board, you'll at least know what you have to work with. Great, thank you.
Perfect timing.
Okay. Next up is report from the Department of Public Works. Well, I guess we can start the report, because it's not a public hearing. Report from the Department of Public Works. Good evening, Mr. Jack.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Newton and Mr. Lyons weren't able to be here this evening, but you do have their written reports, so if there were any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And a couple of the highlights, Mr. McConaty's going to be running through some of the respective highway projects that we've had recently and are going to, but a couple of the highlights would be Old Barnstable Road from Hayway to the town line is completed. Unfortunately, we had to wait for a period of time in order for some poles to be removed, but the end product, quite frankly, was actually worth the wait. And then we finished the Kathley Bates Road project, which came out very well. Of note for both of those were the vehicle speed display sensors that were installed. They're solar-powered, relatively new, and I think that they go a long way toward informing individuals what their actual speeds are. And of course, on Old Barnstable, it's one coming into town, and then for Kathley Bates, we have it in the school zones. We have two of them there, approaching the school zones. And the goal is going to be to start replacing, systematically replacing, the existing signage that we have at other school zones in favor of these there. I, I think that they've had a dramatic impact already. We've received a number of very favorable comments about them, and they do seem to be effective at slowing people down, because I've actually stood there and watched people do it as they hit that sign. It's really unique and amazing. So I think it's a very passive approach, and one that provides a lot of community awareness. So Mr. McConaty would be leading off this evening?
Good evening. Peter McConaty, town engineer. Tonight, I'd like to go through, in my written report, the selectmen have all the projects that the engineering department is currently working on. Selectively, I've chosen two projects that are most important to our department at this time. The first, the first project is Chappaqua Seawall. This is a, obviously, the sign says it all, this area was closed because of the seawall damage and the revetment damage. This is a current picture that was taken last week, last Friday morning. At this time, we have the contractor onboard, ready to start. We're trying to get him to, to set up with mobilize, mobilization and material delivery starting this week. Another photo from the, from the seawood side, showing that the wall is being ballsed out and kicked out. This is the design that, what they're looking for is revetment, as shown in that, in that photo. All those stones are all basically, the tide came in, the sea came in and washed all those stones flat to the bottom of the wall. So what you're looking at with the, with the stone revetment is you want to get a two-to-one, so the waves come up and ride that up, and the energy dissipates as it goes up, as it goes up that revetment and comes up towards the top of the wall. They're gonna, at this portion with a damaged road, they're gonna drive some steel sheeting behind the wall, remove the top section of the wall that's separated from the bottom remainder of the wall, and build this revetment, repave the roadway and install some wooden gut, excuse me, wooden godrail on top. We have gone through the Conservation Commission. This is the notice of intent has been filed. We will be filing a, a certificate of, emergency certificate 24 hours prior to the contractor starting. Catherine Lee Bates, as Mr. Jack has noted, this was a notable project that's been in the works since 2009, working with multiple committees, the school committee, the library committee, the selectmen, to have this project done. This project was completely designed in-house, from A to Z, with the Safe Roots to School Committee. We worked with the school, with the library, to get this. It's basically a 400-foot-long section of roadway. The highlights of this project was we installed a new 400-foot-long concrete sidewalk, new granite curbing around all that sidewalk, ADA ramp reconstruction at 10 locations, the locations at, in the block areas, we ended up reconstructing all those ADA ramps to bring them up to code and to straighten them out for the roadway. We added a 10-foot-wide crosswalk with bumpouts in front of the library entrance, transplanting of several trees on the school property, new vinyl fencing and gates, two LED streetlights with the, with the future expansion option. Every 50 feet along the back of that sidewalk, there's a electric handhole, so in the future that can be set up for, for new lighting. The two lights that are in front of the library at the bumpouts right now, they are working and they are LEDs, so if anyone would like to see what LED looks like in the historical lights, with the, it has the shattered look to the glass lens, to the acrylic glass lens. It's bright. It's like a cool white bright. I don't notice a big difference when I drive through that area. The two solar-powered flashing school signs with the driver feedback boards, they are effective, they do make a difference, and you do see drivers slowing down at that time. And the new asphalt roadway and roadway striping for approximately 1,200 feet. What I'd like to do through these photos is, most, all these photos that are gonna be coming up for this project, this is all showing Public Works, the different departments that worked on this project, the POCs Department, the Highway Department, also the Town Electrician has given an immense help with us to install the electrical conduit under the sidewalk. That's a finished product of the roadway. That photo was taken this morning. Old Barnstable Road was completed a couple of weeks back, paved, finished. This is the intersection where Hayway is. They went up to Tex stereo lane and went approximately west on the roadway, approximately another 100 feet to the top of the hill. This is the lawman seating areas where the Highway Department committed and trimmed up all the edges with the asphalt. By the time they got done with the asphalt, there was like a four-inch lift there that they had to bring in the lawman seat to grade the edges of the road. This is an area where school buses, it's in the opposite corner of, of the Old Barnstable Road, is where school buses were coming around this corner, and they were taking out the front lawn, and they were beating up the asphalt pavement, and they were breaking up the asphalt pavement. So we were able to go to this property owner and get an easement for the property to install this granite curbing, put a 25-foot radius curb in there. It works beautiful. The buses make the radius, no problem now, and buses and, excuse me, buses and trucks. This is the final product. This is also showing the LED flashing sign at the end of Old Barnstable Road at the Mashpee Town Line.
Good to see you were going down to 30 when you took the picture, though.
Yes. Well, actually, I, that was taken earlier this afternoon. I had to wait for a vehicle to, to come by. Shore Street, the, this was, these photos were taken last week, as folks know that have been going through town this past week. We've, we've shut down Shore Street. We've done a milling and overlay project on this. This is a two-inch mill and a two-inch overlay. The roadway was paved today. These photos were actually taken this morning. So at this time, there's a new roadway down from Shore Street, from, on Shore Street, from Surf Drive to Main Street. We're, we're looking at getting the traffic painting and markings in midweek to have this thing completed. And I believe that that's it for engineering.
Peter, would you like to take questions as we roll through?
Absolutely.
Any questions on, on roads? Yes. Okay. Peter?
Not exactly on this. I think you've done a fantastic job. I use Old Barnstable periodically, and it's a significant improvement, and I'm sure Shore Street will too. I just wanted to ask if you have any idea when the state will be finished with Route 28?
Route?
Yeah, the highway.
With the intersection project?
No, with the, no, Route 28.
The resurfacing.
The, the resurfacing of one of the, of the southbound section of Route 28. Is it, it's Route 28?
Yeah. Yeah, it is Route 28. The town doesn't have a lot to do with that project, it's Mass DOT. My understanding of that project is they milled the road, and the, they're, they're looking at doing inspections on the drainage right now. The drainage is not what they thought it was, so at this time, they're doing inspections on the drainage. I do believe, beginning next week, they're gonna be doing a lot of drainage work for the next several weeks. That's why that side of the roadway hasn't been paved, so I do believe that's where, that's where it is right now at this time.
Can I ask a question? Wild Harbor Road. I, I thought that was scheduled to go this summer, and in reading in the report, we don't have the permits. Is that what the problem is?
Wild Harbor Road, it's a, it's, Wild Harbor Road is very flat, and it's very, there's a high water table, so in order to put drainage in that area, we're trying to find the highest areas that we can put drainage in there and piping out of the wetlands area for the Conservation Commission. We've been working with the Conservation Commission since early spring on the project, and basically, we're trying to do the best that we can in that area to take care of as much drainage water before it gets into the wetlands. And that, that can include putting 90s at the ends of the, of the, inside the leach tanks to stop the sediment from, from building and washing into the tanks, additional tanks, tapping in with solid tanks to, to try to cut back on the sediment, so it doesn't go through the system and get out in the outlets. At this time, we are working through the Conservation Commission with options. We would like the gas company... We would like the gas company, I believe is out there right now, putting in gas lines. And they will be doing their patchwork. I'd like to see in certain areas that are bad in the low areas, a cut and grind and pave in the bad areas. And then maybe with a asphalt pave in the spring when the plants open up.
All right. Because last spring, we, those folks out there got all excited thinking their roads were going to be paved this, this season. And been fielding calls most of the summer because the road's in tough repair. I've explained to them it's going to happen. So you're telling us it probably won't happen till next spring.
I would say a full pave for next spring when we get everything straightened out through the Conservation Commission. But we are working with them to see if we can cut and patch the areas, the low areas that are bad right now with the, that have popped up from the trees.
Does it make sense to patch and then come back and pave?
Those areas would have been cut out and patched anyways. Those asphalt areas are bad. They had to be cut out. So at least we'll get those areas cut out and have, we'll have a good base material to put the top course down on.
Okay. Anything else on roads from the board? Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Jerry Patamas, wastewater superintendent. Before we get into the show and tell portion, I just want to go over some of the narratives. One thing that isn't in there, for those of you that are viewers of Falmouth Cable TV, Charlie Pires, the chief operator, has done an excellent narration of what's happening at the treatment plant, wastewater 101. And he also does something I fail to do and a lot of us fail to do. He explains how that facility is a resource recovery facility. We take dirty water, turn it into clean water, much cleaner than a lot of other places. The other thing is that on the bottom of my handout, you'll note that we have additional mass estuary reports completed for almost the rest of our estuaries, Les McGansett, which we're waiting on, born. We have them in draft. They're posted on the websites. I need to schedule an informational hearing, probably three, one for North Falmouth, one for Inner Harbor, Inquisit, and maybe one for Coit with Mashpee. The other thing I think you know about the Cape Cod Commission hearing, I don't think there is anything that they brought up that we didn't anticipate, starting with CECs, chemicals of emerging concern or endocrine disruptors. They are here. Regulations will follow. And with centralized treatment, we're in a much better place to handle whatever EPA or the state may come down with because you're not going to put industrial-grade operations in everybody's backyard. Remember the words. CECs are present in the environment. Regulations will follow. EPA is about ready to start monitoring up to 50 different chemicals, I think, in our water treatment plant. One thing to remember, from wastewater, we have two sources of CECs. A lot come through urine, but a lot come through the gray water where we have the endocrine disruptor memgars that come from plasticizes your soap and things like that. So we'll be on the lookout. There was another statement about phosphorus recovery. I personally, I hope you agree, do not think that Falmouth is going to lead the world in recovering phosphorus because there's a worldwide shortage. It's certainly something that has to be done, but I think it's a little bit beyond ask. The other thing that I noticed that was a little bit misleading, someone had said that the SRF program only allows 30 years for the lifecycle cost of wastewater. Well, that's the bonding of wastewater. They don't want people to bond more than 30 years. The lifecycle cost of wastewater treatment plants, the collection systems are 50 to 100 years. Major pump stations are around 25 years. You just have to look around at our own facilities and you can see Woods Hole went in in 1940s on older type material, a very good material, but on older type construction, and we're still using it. We still have major pump stations working very well. And I know, in case people start, and I know how citizens confuse these things, but when you hear 30 years, there's a difference between bonding costs, what bond council wants, and what the actual lifecycle costs are for any facility. Could I have the next slide, please?
If I could just make a comment?
Yes.
That the Cape Cod Commission extended the public comment period until October 29th.
Yes, I'm sorry. And the, all comments in addition to going to the Cape Cod Commission should go to the MEPA office because Cape Cod Commission does not necessarily, will not transmit those comments to the MEPA office. It's a joint process and a lot of people are confused. You hear a lot about adaptive management. This is the scientific, some of you have seen it. Starts off, we assess the waters, we do studies, we implement projects. We're now here, we'll go back and forth with adaptive management of trying something, see it how it works and going back and forth. So we're embracing on a great roller coaster ride. The train has left the station. We're on run track now, but we probably could switch over to, hopefully, we'll switch over to a couple of other tracks. Another confusion here is some people think we're going to change the TMDLs, the total amount of nitrogen that has to be removed. That's unlikely. What will happen is how that nitrogen gets removed, eco toilets, compost toilets, inlet widening, or traditional sewers. Next slide, please. This is administrative adaptive management. You've seen it. We have acceptability of the public, we have legal, and we have technical. The scientific adaptive management gets us into the technical part. The legal and regulatory, we can see DEP saying, gee whiz, if you want to take a chance, we'll let you take a chance. Before, they would have held us to the highest scientific standard possible. Now, because of the larger costs, we've already heard them now say, if you want to take the risk, that's us, the town, we'll allow you to spend your money. But if it doesn't work, we, the town, are going to be responsible. And then, and before, I would always say, the law triumphs science, even though it will push. But it's generally, if you have a difference of opinion, the law wins. But now lately, public acceptability trumps everything. You can't build something for which we can't afford or the people don't want to build or the people don't have an appetite for. What I mean is compost toilets, let's say they prove to be efficient. People may not want them. So that might be an adaptive management where it works, but we're not going to put them in or we'll give people an option. Shellfish may work, but when we tell the shell fishermen, are you going to assume responsibility for the nitrogen load that we, as a town, have to accept? We might have to compromise that the science and the true gold standard will drive things, but we will have backups, belt and suspenders for everything else. The next best scientific approach we have is inlet widening. No question, you open the inlets and boom. Granted, it's dilution, but we reduce the nitrogen load we have to remove from, by collection systems dramatically. Next slide, please. I hope, no, it's blurry with and without my glasses. Site seven is the site of, I guess I should say, great controversy and maybe concern by a lot of people. We identify, we've identified a number of sites. Site seven and 10 were the two premier sites to go forward. Site 10, we have an acquired. Site seven, we're in the process of acquiring. Site seven can take 1 million gallons a day approximately of wastewater. Even if everybody doesn't believe us or the future studies don't show that we can get to 1 MGD, we most likely will get to a half a million gallons or 350. Or in the spirit of compromise, build that site out in modular. You say, what happens if it doesn't work? Well, we have other sites here, but that changes the equation. As we bring wastewater over here, we probably have to sewer more. We also have ocean outfalls into Buzzards Bay or the Vineyard Sound or possibly even up to the base. I know I'm way ahead of you people, but we predict the future by inventing it today and thinking about ways, what we're going to do if we hit an obstacle. The third, and again, this is not palatable by a lot of people, we could sewer a small portion of West Falmouth Harbor and still accommodate additional flow such that we don't have to use all or any of site seven. So I think we're, and I know a lot of these things are controversial, but these are the options you will be looking at or we will be bringing to you for discussions purposes. Next slide, please. This is Little Pond Sewer Shed. You can see this area here. In the military, they say you're not supposed to wave the red light because it drives people batty, but there's no way I could show that outline. This will be where we're going to go. This essentially is the gold standard. We're starting off with centralized or collection sewer. But this area could also be expanded depending on inputs from the planning board or the Board of Health. For example, this small area down here is technically outside the watershed. The cesspools in groundwater, we may want to sewer there. This area up here is in the next watershed, but it's the upper part of the Maravista, but it impacts Perch Pond. We may want to consider that. And then we have a stretch along here where we're just shy of Falmouth Heights Road. Well, it may be worthwhile to extend sewers down Falmouth Heights Road a little bit to pick up some of the larger discharges to accommodate those flows into the inner harbor, which is also, has impairment. All those things are not decisions for Jerry Patamas or the Water Quality Management Committee. These are decisions we have to made, make as a community involving planning and border health and other input. Obviously, this project, we don't want to exceed the flow capability that we ultimately determined to exist for site seven. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the board? Thank you.
I'll be followed by Mary Beth Weiser.
Good evening. Good morning.
Good evening. Mary Beth Weiser, Water Superintendent. The Long Pond Winter and Summer Pilot has been completed and we're waiting a report from TATA and Howard. As you know, this purpose of this pilot was to determine whether the town of Falmouth would have a new water treatment facility or add additional disinfection to the existing water plant. We'll be submitting the report in November to DEP, followed by a report to the Board of Selectmen sometime in December. Next slide, please. One of the projects we worked on this past quarter was replacing worn-out signs around the Long Pond as required by Mass DEP. And those are two examples of the signs you might see if you're out walking around the Upcoming project we have is we're going to be replacing about 150 feet of water main on Nursery Hill Road. This will connect two dead-end mains, which will hopefully improve, should improve the quality of the water. As you can see, we've had quite a number of complaints in the area and hopefully this will help solve those issues. One of the other things that we've been working on is in September, the water division had training for the emergency response plan. This was a full day of training and it was held at the Gus Canty Center. And the purpose of this plan was to protect the assets for the town of Falmouth by ensuring orderly and efficient transition from normal operations to emergency operations. And we've completed about 527 work orders this past quarter. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Sure. To the board, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rocky Yom's Park Superintendent.
Welcome.
We've just wrapped up, just about wrapped up our mowing season. Seems to go pretty well this year. And we're getting into some of our little playground projects. It seems like we're in the business of installing playgrounds now. It's a nice thing, the community's raising the funds for the playgrounds, so the least we could do is install them. This is a project at West Falmouth Ballpark, Jake Berry, and Together We Can raise the money for this. This is the first phase. We'll be in there to do a second phase soon as they can raise the rest of the money. We did put a slide, a swing set and a handicap table and some fencing in, so this was a real nice project. This was Bell Tower Playground, the baseball field there. The baseball field over there hasn't been, it's been, well, I guess, it's been maintained, but it just really needed to be reconstructed. The lips were very high and very dangerous for the players. So we stripped out the old clay surface and installed a stone dust surface, about 890 yards, sorry, tons of stone dust. So it's a great improvement for that area. This is T Ticket School. This is the third playground we've installed there. The PTO continues to raise money to update the playground apparatus. We removed some older stuff that was there from, I think I installed it when I first got here in the early 90s. So we did remove that and install this new one. And this should be the extent of the playgrounds being replaced there. And this was the Woods Hole Parking Lot, though, at the end of the bike path. I don't know if you're familiar with it. The Church of the Messiah came to us and said that they wanted to, there's like a six-foot buffer strip between the parking surface and that wall. And they said that they would like to donate some, some trees to plant along the area to, you know, to block the parking lot. So we went in there, took all the evasives out. We excavated it to about a foot and filled it back in and replanted with 30 to 40 deciduous trees. As you can see, the buffer came out pretty nice and they did pick up the cost for it. It cost them about $7,000 for all that. And we went in there in a day and a half and replanted it all. Another nice project.
Great.
And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much, Rocky.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from the board about any issues? I'd just like to ask one question. I don't know where, and I knew Pat had another question. The Woods Hole Drawbridge, it has gone down to an hour opening and I knew there were some problems there this summer. Can you fill us in on what's going on with that? I knew there were some power concerns or something of that nature. So can you bring us up to speed?
Yes, there were some power concerns. What would happen is the bridge would cut out. The bridge is rated for 208 amps and when it drops down below, it's a, the electric panels, mechanical panels, are sensitive, very sensitive. And it drops down below 202, 204, the bridge cuts out. And it would always cut out when the bridge was on its way down to about 10 feet, 10 feet off the ground, it would cut out. We've had our emergency contractor and our maintenance contractor down there several times over the, over the summer and looking into the issues. At this time, they're looking at installing a power supply. It's basically a power booster, power supply into the unit. That is scheduled, the next time they, the company comes down to do a scheduled visit, they will install that to take care of that. And my understanding of it is that should take care of the surges.
Okay. While we still have you here, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention in our packets, we have the LED light test as well, the locations. But for the public information, do you want to explain to them where they are located, Peter? It's already been approved by the board, but it might be good that the public knows where these lights are actually going.
Okay. The Cape Light Compact requested from the town of Falmouth, two areas to install some demonstration projects for some LED lighting. The, they have to, the lighting has to be four lights, consecutive lights in a row that can be changed out so the public can view the contrast between the existing lights that are currently on the Cobra Heads and the LED lighting. The lights have to be Cobra, Cobra Head, Cobra Head lights. Those are the lights that stick out over the street, the Cobra Head lighting. And they were looking for two areas, one commercial area and one residential area. The commercial area that we had chose is, is right in front of the Gus Canty Center, one, on one, in front of the police station on one side of the driveway to the Gus Canty Center. And the other three lights on the east side of the driveway, all three of them would be right in front of the Gus Canty Center. There've been some issues in that area in the past with the lighting and we thought that that would be a good candidate for the commercial area. The residential area that we chose was four consecutive lights along sections of Seacoast Shores. And Seacoast Shores is very flat and there are many roads off of Seacoast Shores and every, outside of, no, every street has a street light except for two on that roadway. So the area that we chose is between Hotwell Street and I think Yale, Yale Drive. And that area will be, you'll be, it is low foliage, there's no low trees, it's open area to the sky. And it's, the area is flat, it's level terrain, it's flat and straight, no horizontal geometry to take care of over there to be looked at. So you'll be able to differentiate between the lighting and then that areas for those two areas. two areas.
Okay, that's great. One other question on lighting. There was some talk about putting some lighting on that Thomas Landis Road by the ice arena?
Yes, it's complete. On my way into, on my way into work this morning, I drove through there, they did put a Cobra Head light shining. It's shining onto Thomas Landis Road, but it's at that intersection, the first utility pole, as you drive into the tech park. So it does light up the intersection quite well.
Great.
That area was dark, it was a dark area.
Right.
In the information that was provided to us, it says the fixture head style for these LED lights, they'll be either a refractor or a cutoff style. Can we specify cutoff? Or do we not have a choice? The reason why I say, for those not familiar with it, the cutoff style means that all the light is directed downwards, whereas the refractor style, you get light that's directed sideways as well, and it creates glare from a distance, and it's essentially a waste of energy because you're lighting up the sky instead of lighting up the ground, so.
We could request from the Cape Light Compact if they could be the refractor. With the LED lighting, the LED lighting is more of a straight, more of a zone-specific lighting, angled down for zone-specific, whereas the sodium vapors, they spread out further with the glass. The glass in the bottom of the lighting is rounded, so as Mr. Buttonham has said, the lighting hits the glass and spreads out sideways. So that's, we could request that through the Cape Light Compact.
Bearing the fact that this is a test, maybe we should try half and half, I mean, one location with one and one location with the other. You bring up a good point. I wouldn't know to bring up the point, but.
I could go into all sorts of things about light pollution, but that's the reason why I ask about the refractor versus the reflector, that it generates less light pollution than the reflector does.
Okay. Bearing, being an astronomer as you are.
And just as one more note, the typical lighting that we've used on the Main Street lights with historical lights, they range from 100 to 150 watts. These LED lights that we were able to put out at the entrance, the back entrance to the library, are 70 watts. So there's considerable difference in cut. There's going to be an energy in savings, and there's also an energy in the maintenance. I mean, the hours, the hours that you get out of these lights are, is going to be a considerable difference. So it's going to save the town fixing these lights in the downtown area.
So will you be able to speak to Cape Cod Light?
Yes. Now, would you like to see if you could split them two in two?
I'll go with.
Unless there's no objection, I make the suggestion based on my experience.
Okay. I don't have any experience on it whatsoever, so.
Reflective rather than refraction?
Correct.
Yep, check into that.
Anybody else have any other questions while Mr. Conaughey?
Well, I did have a question about the benefits of the LED, but I think you addressed those in your last comments.
Great.
And a considerable difference.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the hard work, everyone in the Department of Public Works. We have one other.
Could I just make a comment? I'd just like to comment, and also to speak directly to the DPW people who are here, how very valuable these reports are to us on a quarterly basis. And I know it takes a lot of your time to put them together, but I think they help us a great deal. And then they help the community at home, people who are listening, to really know if there's a project in their neighborhood, they get a little more information about it. But it helps us not only in understanding what's happening in the town, but to be able to answer questions from people in the community about, you know, when is this going to happen, or when is that going to happen? How's it going to work? What is it going to do? So I just want to thank you for continuing to bring these to us.
Still with the Department of Public Works, we have a report on the, to discuss the Main Street repaving project status, and I don't know who's going to handle that. Mr. Jack?
Bless you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to go back to the Eopond Bridge just for a moment, real quick. Right now, it is on a one-hour opening schedule, and the board should probably give serious consideration to maintaining that schedule even during the summer season. We'll be able to provide you with a report later this, later this fall or early in the spring, based on historical openings that we have had out there. And quite frankly, everything that I've seen doesn't drive a half-hour opening. I think it would be less disruptive to the community, and the board may want to give serious consideration to that one-hour opening. The low voltage circuit is one of the issues that we've had out there, and it was overheating as a result of the half-hour openings, because during the opening, it's almost a full 15 minutes, if you will. And then, of course, within a half an hour of that 15 minutes, it's happening again. So it's really not even a half-hour amount of time between the full opening and the full closing that's actually occurring. So I just wanted to point that out for the board to think about.
And along those lines, I'm familiar with Pitt and Arum Harbor, Dartmouth, and they do, they have a bridge that bisects their harbor, and the inner harbor is considerably larger than Eopond is, and they do an hourly opening as well. And the only place I know of that does a half-hour opening is, it's the Route One Bridge in the Piscataqua River that connects New Hampshire and Maine, Portsmouth and Kittery. And they do a half-an-hour opening, but they have a significant amount of commercial traffic that goes through there, so. Just reference.
Okay. And on that same issue, it's no secret that, you know, I run a business, but there are other interests besides the interest in traffic on the street. I know a lot of the recreational folks as well as the commercial folks there would probably want some input. So if and do we do that change, we would have a public hearing on that.
Absolutely.
Because we'd want to get their input in regard to that. Keep in mind, that bridge at one point in time was an on-call bridge, and the reason we went off of the on-call was because of the deterioration of the old bridge. And then we went to the hour, and when it was reconstructed, folks, there was public outcry to go back to the half-hour. So if we make a change for a long-term period, I know that for folks out there, that we'll have a public hearing on that, so we'll get input from everybody there as well. Okay?
We may want to make sure the public hearing actually happens, not during the winter season, but we may have to wait to the summer season because that is the majority of the people we're talking about.
Right, right. Well, you're exactly right. We want to make sure that at least they're heard in some form or fashion. I don't know if we'd want to wait until July to make that vote, but surely right around the Memorial Day period, you're right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Main Street.
Main Street. As the board's aware, we were intending to pave Main Street after Columbus Day, which would have been any time now, similar to Shore Street. And there were really two reasons why we were going to be paving it. One, it's been 25 years since there's been any major paving on Main Street, and therefore it's at the end of, it's nearing the end of its useful life cycle, and the maintenance is starting to go up. So the PCI or Pavement Condition Index ratings that we do, on a scale of zero to 100, Main Street is 30 or less, all right? So we've taken at least four sections of this particular area that we were talking about, repaving between the Village Green and Ny Road, which is 3,700 feet, broken it down into four sections, and those were the PCI indexes. So our maintenance costs are going to go up, and probably one of the most significant events on Main Street is the cracking, because virtually all of those cracks are going to result in potholes and deterioration of the paving surface is going to be accelerated. So the cost would have been about $380,000 in order to do that. The second major reason for wanting to do it now would have been the water main beneath Main Street, and for a long portion of the area between the Village Green and Oxpeck would have been eight-inch and 10-inch predominantly cast iron water main from 1899. The price tag in order to replace that main and do the paving is in excess of $7 million. So we did not see that the town was going to be able to bank that money within the next several years, therefore the maintenance work for Main Street made a lot of sense. This summer, however, we were presented with an opportunity. Senator Murray's office had contacted our town manager, Mr. Sussa, with regard to a transportation bond bill that was being filed this summer and finalized, asking if there were any projects that we wanted to submit under that. So we came up with a list of three projects, one being the bike path for a cost of $800,000 to widen it from 10 to 12 feet. That would have been the older portion of the bike path. It's very heavily used, and it's getting very, very crowded because of that intense use, so it seemed to be a pretty good project to submit. Another one was White's Landing, which would have been 700 feet of road, new dock, sidewalk, curbing, drainage, et cetera, about $525,000. And then the third one was really a shot in the dark, and that was throw Main Street in there at $7 million. And that's the one that the state accepted. So they included it in the transportation bond bill, which is a one-year bill for this year at, I want to say, $1.5 billion worth of spending. This completes the end of a cycle of a five-year state transportation bond bill. The project went in without a funding amount on it because it went through under an amendment. And I think there's probably another reason for that, but what I suspect is that if the project were to be fully approved under that bond bill for the upcoming federal fiscal year, which would be after October for fiscal year 13, I don't believe that they're necessarily going to be willing to fund all of it at the full $7 million. So therefore, there could be a substantial portion thereof they might be willing to fund. But either way, for the foreseeable future, that's probably the only way we're going to be able to get that main replaced down Main Street. And that main's already 110 years old. If we don't, it's not just the main, if we have a problem on that main, we're relying on 110-year-old valves to try to control it, which isn't going to pan out very well. And we're going to be shutting down large portions of Main Street in order to fix that. So where we are now with this opportunity, if it's going to come to fruition, I believe it'll probably be within the next year to year and a half that we would know if the state's going to intend to assist the town in that regard. If so, Main Street can and is in a position to wait for that. We can do some minor maintenance on it in order to get us through that period. So the suggestion here is, at this time, to defer the maintenance paving on Main Street for at least this coming year to see what happens with the transportation bond bill, because it really is a huge opportunity for the town to get a significant project done that has multiple benefits. The new main going in there would be a 16-inch main, which would act as a major transmission main moving water east to west, all right? And it would benefit the town's hydraulically a significant amount. The board may recall, it was about seven years ago, we did a $6.6 million bond on water transmission mains only, so the larger mains like 28A, Terry Union Intersection, Woods Hole Road, and T-Ticket Highway were all significant water mains that we put in before the state paved those roads. So this is both to our benefit as well as the state's, because portions of Main Street and T-Ticket Highway are state road as well.
Okay. My only questions are this. Number one is, we can continue to check back periodically, meaning late winter, see where we are?
Yes.
Okay. Number one. But number two, although it's quaint, Main Street is becoming like a country road, meaning in the form of it's becoming very bumpy. Sometimes that's good because it slows traffic, but it is, you know, the centerpiece of our community. Is there any way to be able to make sure that the road is passable and acceptable?
The bumps are difficult to fix without an overlay. The cracks and some of the uneven portions, we can take care of through a couple of different processes, and that's what I mean. As far as the minor maintenance, we could get into some infrared, which has the ability to level out some of the smaller areas, more condensed areas where we may have a rippling effect. And then, of course, we have some areas that are already failing with respect to opening up on existing trenches, and we can redo those with hot mix in order to make it more palatable for this year, and we can also do some more work in the spring, but.
Okay. And my next question is, we have money from the debt exclusion that was going towards Main Street, if I'm not mistaken?
No, that would have been Chapter 90 funding.
Main Street was Chapter 90.
Chapter 90, yes.
So that, my follow-up was, if we don't do it, are we going to, is that money going to go to something else, and will Main Street go further down on the list if we don't get on the bond bill?
No, for right now, my proposal would be that it's already accepted by the state, so if we're only talking about postponing it for a year or less, then we'll keep it on there for the time being, so the money would not be reallocated. And in this way, we'll be able to revisit it and make a determination then.
Okay. But I just want to say this statement out here, the states are going to only fund $1 million of a $7 million project. Those are some decisions that we would have to go to the voters with, and we're going to have to make that hard decision. So the sooner we can get an idea on that, the better it is, because we have some major projects facing us next spring. One, water filtration. Two, some, the beginning of our wastewater issue, and then we add this in here, we've got some competing interests. So the sooner we know about this, the better it is for our planning.
Yes.
Great. Brett?
I just have one question. You mentioned White's Landing, and that is probably, from my perspective at least, one of the most, if not the most intensely-used town landing, and yet it just seems to continue to deteriorate year after year after year. Is there any future in getting that fixed? You mentioned that the state rejected that. Have they even seen it? Because if they did, they, I imagine they would, I would hope that they would bump it up on the list.
Believe it or not, the state was working with us on that project.
That sounds good.
Yes. So, no, it's one of our higher priorities that we need to get done, and we'll figure out a way to make it happen.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have one comment concerning the Main Street. I've been walking down the sidewalk, and it seems like the wonderful pavement we did with the bluestone has been suffering through ice and salt more than we expected. If we're not going to do the Main Street, is there any way we could put a little bit of some funding towards at least improving the sidewalks during this winter, this fall?
Before the winter hits, it would be difficult. We'll try to do some of the maintenance on it. That bluestone is not cheap by any stretch of the imagination, and it happens to be unique in its depth. And I don't recall exactly what the differences in depth are between the bluestone, the natural bluestone versus artificial products, but it's at least a quarter of an inch difference. And this has a concrete foundation, so it's not as though we can just dig it out very easily and try to replace it. So maintaining it is expensive, and it's going to be difficult, and we had already looked at this particular area recently, so that when we get into any new projects in the future, whether it be the Village Green toward Depo Avenue or Main Street project, if we get into sidewalks and everything else for that, then we'll probably be looking at different types of recommendations on where the board may be able to want to go with something like that. But we are going to get some maintenance effort on there, because we have already heard from the Village Association with regard to that, and we certainly don't want anyone up there tripping on it. So we're going to pick some of the areas that are the worst right now and try to get those done before the winter, and then we'll pick some more up in the spring. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Great, thank you very much, Mr. Jack. Appreciate it. Next up is new Class II motor vehicle license. Falmouth Auto Center, 614 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, for the applicant. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
If you could come up and introduce yourself and explain.
My name is Luis Nato. We operate an auto repair shop in 614 East Falmouth Highway, and we're here today to apply for a Class II motor vehicle, car sales.
All right, just for the board's information, the Falmouth Police Department has no problems with issuing a license. There is a, something from the Zoning Board of Appeals that does allow, but with some And here's the one restriction that should be read into record. There shall be no more than 10 used automobiles for sale on the subject property as approved herein. The 10 autos shall be staged on the site with no more than three in the front of the building, no more than seven staged in the rear of the building. There shall be no sale of auto parts and no sale of salvaged operation conducted on the subject property. So I'll open it up to questions from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. I think the application was very clear in terms of the existing operations that occur there and the compatibility of all three. So I would move approval of this license with those conditions, as you outlined from the Board of Appeals.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. The conditions are actually already printed on the license that we'll be signing, so there's a motion and a second. Any further? Any further comment from the board? Any public comment? So I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye's having. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have the Falmouth Aquatics Steering Committee presentation. Okay, this is it. Good evening. If you'd, someone would like to introduce yourselves for us, please, to get going. Okay? Other problem?
Yeah, I'm not sure the projector's turned on.
Yes, it is. It's okay.
Jim?
There we go. Did you go wrong?
Yes.
You don't want to go without your presentation?
No. Yeah, she doesn't, she'll, she's, yeah, she's ahead of us. I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight to present to you. I'm Jim Pricek, Chairman of Falmouth Aquatics. With me is Kevin Post from Councilman Hunsaker. And what we're going to present to you tonight is a report on what we think is going to be very informative, very important, and most of all, very exciting about what we think the future of aquatics in Falmouth can be. And there are a lot of things that have gone into this report. One is it started with a vision, and we combined that with, I'd say, hundreds of hours of very hard work by a whole group of volunteers that have put a lot into this report. Generous donations that made it possible from a number of members of our community. There's the expertise and the experience of Councilman Hunsaker, and very importantly, the input through the process of gathering the data from this report by community stakeholders and Falmouth leaders like yourself. And I want to take the opportunity to thank you for what you people put into the report the time that a lot of you gave to be interviewed and help make this report much more informed. What we're going to go through today is going to start out, I'm going to give an introduction to Falmouth Aquatics, who we are, what we're doing, why we are where we are, and how we hope to get to where we want to get to. Kevin is going to take over and talk about the process that Councilman Hunsaker follows with us and communities like us that they work with. He's going to talk a lot about aquatic trends, what is going on in the industry, and then very specifically, how that relates to the needs assessment that was done here in Falmouth and how that relates to what aquatics could be in this town. And then I'm going to come back on, and I'm going to take up, talk to you about the next steps that are involved in what we're going to be doing. Who are we and what we're doing? You know, you can take our vision, you kind of break it down into about four pieces. One is, we want a first-class, high-quality aquatics center here that strives for excellence. We want it to meet the needs of our community. If it doesn't meet the needs of the community, the question is, why are you doing it? Very importantly, for, in this day and age, we want it to be financially sustainable, and we also need it to be accessible to the broad range of people in our community. The volunteers who were engaged in this effort really got involved and engaged in the summer of 2011. Things progressed, and towards the end of 2011, it became clear we needed to have opened this up to the broader community, and we had the first open community meeting in January. The next two months, sort of January, February, and early March, you can think of as our burling process, we're forming the organization, we're starting to do a lot of research, things like that. And then, very importantly for us, in April, we formed a relationship with the Cape Cod Foundation, which is referred to as a fiscal sponsorship agreement or a financial sponsorship agreement, which A) gives us the legal ability to raise funds as a not-for-profit, and also, very importantly, gives us the administrative support to go through that process of raising funds and doing all the things that you need to do when you're trying to operate as a not-for-profit. So that is a very important part of what helps us get to where we're going. So we sort of defined a mission when we came into this, and that started with trying to define and determine what were the needs and the aquatics and wellness needs here in Falmouth. And so that's a very big part of what you're going to see today is the result of that. Another part of that, which we're sort of just starting, there's some early analysis, but the next stage is really get to this, or we'll determine what is financially sustainable here in Falmouth. And finally, and very importantly, we wanted to investigate and evaluate all the organizational options, all the partnership models that were available to us to determine what may work best here in Falmouth. Our approach has been, we started out with a lot of research. There are so many in the group who are scientists by nature, and the first thing that, when you tell us to do something, is we say, do some research on it, investigate it. So we researched, we talked to people who ran facilities, talked to people who built facilities of all kinds, talked to people who took concepts from vision through the development of facilities, et cetera. We talked to as many people as we could, gathered as much information as we could, and then started to, and that sort of gave us an outline of where we were going to go, what we wanted to do. We then engaged the committee, and we involved, and we had made a decision that, that we really wanted to do a professional needs assessment and feasibility study, that that was really where we wanted to go. That took engaging the community, getting more ideas, and very importantly, doing some fundraising, raising funds to do that, which we did. And then following that, we started looking for a partner, a professional partner, to help us with the needs assessment and feasibility study. We interviewed five firms. We got all of them nationally recognized. We got proposals from three of them, and we selected Councilman Hunsaker as our partner to go through these steps with us. And so that is how we've gotten to where we are. What you're going to see now is the result of the study that Councilman Hunsaker has done with us, and Kevin's going to take over with that.
Thank you, Jim. And I'd like to thank all of you for letting me come and present this information to you tonight. Again, my name is Kevin Post. I'm with a company called Councilman Hunsaker. We're an aquatic planning and design firm. That's all we do is design swimming pools. We've designed over 850 facilities across the country, and we've done over 200 studies just like what we're doing today here in Falmouth. So our feasibility study process that we have done, again, over 200 times across various communities, follows basically three major categories. The first part is the needs assessment, and then goes into program requirements, and then finally, the operations plan. The reason the needs assessment's highlighted in yellow is that's where we are today. We have completed the needs assessment, we're presenting a summary of our findings tonight, and the goal is, and the next steps will be, to then further take this process forward and develop the program requirements, which would look at what that facility conceptually may be, what spaces it would include, and how much it would cost. And then also develop an operations plan to estimate the potential revenue, look at the expected operational expenses, and determine the overall cash flow and how that facility would operate on a year-to-year basis. So we do not have any of that information yet today. We really want to bring this information to you early and upfront. So what we have done is our needs assessment, which included first, an aquatics definition of aquatics in a variety of interviews. We've met with several stakeholders, we'll go through that a little bit more. But really tried to determine what are the wants and needs revolving around aquatics here in this community. We also did research on area, other area providers, basically what other aquatic opportunities are available in the community and in the surrounding communities. We also looked at the demographics to benchmark what we heard, not only from select groups, but also look at the overall community as a whole. And with that, we've identified the potential user groups and are also identifying potential partnerships and what we think could build a successful aquatic facility in Falmouth. So as we, first part, we have to look at is discussing aquatic trends, and what is a pool today? Because the definition of aquatics has changed a lot over the past 30 years, and even more so in accelerated rate over the past 10 years. And what's changed is the expectation of aquatic facilities now of a higher quality, and it's also a very unique experience depending on those users. Typically, we used to just have a pool user, was a swimmer. Well, now we have different types of pool users. We have competitive users, recreational users, instructional users, and wellness and therapy. Each of these groups requires specific areas and features, and they have a different want and need and what they look at in a pool. Typically, those wants and needs revolve around water depths and water temperatures. So the competitive swimmer likes deeper pools, colder pools, they consider that to be fast water. While the recreation user maybe wants it a little bit warmer, wants a variety of spaces, wants to be able to socialize. The instructional group, depending on what type of instruction you're having, needs different water temperatures and water depths, different areas and spaces allocated for those programs. And of course, the wellness and therapy group, and we think of wellness aquatics and therapy aquatics in warm water and that really chest-high deep. So while we're really good engineers at Councilman Hunsaker, we've yet to find a way to build one pool that's multiple, or one body of water that's multiple temperatures. So the best way to meet all the needs of these different user groups is to have different types of facilities for each one. The competitive user is the simplest facility type to define because it's very straightforward. They want a body of water that meets the dimensions of the regulatory agencies. So that could be 25 yards, 25 meters, or 50 meters, and the bodies, the regulatory agencies are the National Federation of State High Schools for high school swimming, the NC2As, USA Swimming, which is our club teams, and then also FINA, which is the international standard. So again, each one of these, there's very distinct manners, whether they're going to compete in the 25 yards, 25 meters, or 50 meters, and really the only decision is how many lanes do we want to fill capacity needs. When we look at the images on the top left, this is our six-lane 25-yard lap pool. This is the minimum requirement for both high school swimming and NC2A. So this is the minimum acceptable aquatic facility for competition. The challenge here is with six lanes, typically you can put about five athletes per lane, which gives you about 30 athletes can train at any given time, so it's a capacity limitation. There's also a limitation on usage with the community. If we're going to have joint use with the community, do we fill all the lanes with competitive swimmers and not allow the community in, or do we have to limit the competitive team's use? So we would need more capacity. When we look at the bottom, we see the 50-meter by 25-yard pool. This is the definition of an Olympic-sized pool. So if you hear the Holiday Inn claiming that they have an Olympic pool, that's not true. This is, and I like to show this slide because you can actually see it's almost four times the size of the minimum requirement. A 50-meter pool is a large body of water. The benefit, it has up to 22 25-yard lanes, so that adds a lot of capacity. You can offer, you know, a variety of programs, have multiple teams in there, and still have plenty of open lanes for the community. In the middle, we have a 25-yard by 25-meter pool, so it's only half the size of the Olympic pool, still offers yards and meters components, because back in 1970s, we all agreed we were going to switch to the metric system, so someday it still may happen. So we can plan ahead for that because this is going to be a 30, 40, 50-year solution. But the other benefit there is, we see that it has 11 25-yard lanes, so we can offer eight lanes to a team practicing and still have three lanes open to our community. So again, adjusting the amount of lanes based on capacity needs. When we look at the recreation user, I said the competitive user is probably the simplest. The recreation user is probably the most complex because there's so many opportunities out there for them. It is the most popular and diverse aquatic user group. According to the National Sporting Goods Association, 90% of Americans classify themselves as instructional users. The reason for that is, it doesn't just mean we're going to go splash and play, it means you don't go with a coach for a workout. This includes fitness swimming, this includes recreational leagues, it's a wide variety of aquatic users. And it's every age group, it's tots, it's teens, it's adults. Each one has a different want and need and how they recreate around an aquatic facility. And this typically have more modern amenities they may have seen in water parks, but they're a little toned down, more for community-oriented facilities. But they blend lap lanes, they also have zero-depth entries and ramp entries, water slides are very popular, moving water, things like current channels and water vortexes, so that the water's not just a stagnant body of water, but it's moving, it gives the kids a little bit of excitement, also offers opportunities for resistance training for adults, and of course, getting the water vertical with interactive features and get more excitement, get those kids to want to go to the pool and learn to swim. So as I mentioned, it's the most popular user group. It's actually, swimming is the third most popular sport or exercise activity in the United States. And again, it mentions that the recreation user includes all types of recreational leagues, fitness classes, as well as lap swimming. The general lap swimmer is still a recreational user. They may not want to show up at 5:00 AM and have Mark coach them and swim 5,000 yards every day, but they still want to stay fit. And bringing all these groups together, that adds up to about 314 million visits per year in the United States to recreational water attractions. Now, the instruction and lesson program user, we really just have to define what type of lesson programs we want to offer. This could be swim lessons, water safety instruction, lifeguarding, you know, scuba, kayak clinics. The key thing here is, you know, our community is surrounded on three sides by water, by natural body of water. It is important, it's a life safety skill to teach these kids to swim at a young age. One of the points down here at the bottom is it's becoming a common trend for schools to actually include in their PE curriculum swim lessons, and that all kids have to learn to swim before they can graduate elementary school. I was also at the World Aquatic Health Conference last week, and there was a lot of talk about drowning prevention. They showed a map about drowning rates across the United States. All of the border, the coastal states, and all the southern states have the highest drowning rates, and the reason was because of those natural bodies of water that we have access to, but we never teach our kids how to be safe around them. So it's critically important as a life safety skill to give them an opportunity to learn these skills in a safe environment. Now, wellness and therapy user, this is the fastest-growing aquatics group. We're really starting to see the benefits of aquatic wellness and aquatic therapy. It can be a variety of things, whether it's therapy programs for outpatients with hospital usage, it can also just be exercise classes, aerobics classes. You know, we've heard of Pilates and Zumba and yoga, and we've seen all those on dry land. Well, I've seen all of them in the water now. We're starting to see aqua Pilates, aqua Zumba. So anything you can do on dry land, you can do in the water, and there's a lot of benefits to that. Some of the benefits is obviously it helps boost your immune system, because that cold water temperature, lowering your body temperature helps boost your immune system. It also aids in the rehabilitation, as we talked about doing, maybe land Zumba is too challenging for some of the older adults, but you bring that in the water, we have a decreased impact on our joints and bones, we have increased resistance, so we have a, you know, increased that endurance training. And also with stress management. Again, that comes back to, maybe after a long day, we're just going swimming laps helps with the stress management side. There's a lot of benefits of the aquatic wellness aspect. Talking about how it's the fastest-growing choice, in the early 80s, there was about 200,000 participants in aquatic exercise. By 1988, that grew to 2.2 million. In 2004, that became 5.8 million, and by 2007, that was up to 7.2 million. That was a 3,500% increase from 1983 to 2007. So this is not going away. We're really seeing the benefits, we're really just starting to branch out and look for more opportunities of how to get wellness, and with our aging communities, we're seeing even more and more desire to put those aquatic-based exercise programs together. Now, some of you may be familiar with the Sandwich High School facility. I know there's been some talk about the ongoing operational struggles and how to keep that facility funded. And it's true, aquatics is a costly facility, and for some reason, it's very popular in the United States, which is good for me, but it is very costly, so we have to look at how to sustain that. One of the trends that we're seeing is developing partnership across multiple community organizations to help diversify that, you know, the struggles that you face with those operational challenges and help minimize those operational subsidies. Some of the typical ways of talking about a partnership is it could obviously be a public-public partnership, which we've seen a lot of where a town would partner with a school district, both operating an aquatic facility. We also see public-sector, private-sector partnerships. There's some private sectors out there who would help donate money, that could also assist in operations. It's a variety of partnerships, opportunities, again, working with the town and then the private operator. And we also see the public sector and non-for-profit. The most familiar one is probably operating with the YMCA. They typically will come in and help with the capital campaign, they'll also help with the ongoing operations. We've also seen this true with non-for-profit organizations such as Falmouth Aquatics, where they help with the fundraising, capital gain, and operations to help minimize that burden on the town. There's two basic forms of partnerships. It could be both on the capital side, which is to fund the construction, but it can also be in a program partner, which is really to help on the operations and to help on the revenue side. Some of the positive effects of partnerships and why we see the trend going this direction, it's going to reduce the cost to provide government services. Typically, pools are looked at like libraries. It's something that the town or your community is just supposed to provide for you, but that's not true anymore. And one of the things we're seeing is by those non-for-profits or private sectors coming in, they're able to reduce the cost, most of that's allocated towards overhead for It's going to create budgeted and creative program opportunities, but having more partners, more people at the table, more people talking, more people thinking creatively helps build opportunities. It also spreads the risk amongst all partners. So again, we have that risk-reward, where we get more opportunities and more benefit, we also share that risk with each other. It's going to merge resources to create a higher level of service delivery. So if each one of these organizations that needed a pool or wanted a pool is to do it on their own, they wouldn't get much, and it wouldn't be very successful. But with everyone coming together, we see a lot more successful, more high-end facilities and operating more sustainably. sustainably. It also offers entrepreneurial opportunities that are not always affordable to public agencies, by having that non-for-profit or that private sector operator can sometimes bring in new opportunities. The biggest thing, the biggest takeaway here is it creates a win-win situation for everyone, whether it's reducing costs, adding profit, getting more for your capital dollars. By working together, the community builds a sustainable, successful aquatic facility. So how do these trends relate to Falmouth? Well, I needed, first thing we did was we held stakeholder interviews. On July 16th and 17th, I was here in town, we started about 7:30 in the morning, went to about 9 o'clock at night, and every hour on the hour, we had a new group coming in. It was great two days. And then also, because not everyone was able to meet with us during those two days, we also had follow-up phone calls for anyone who wasn't available, just to make sure that anyone who wanted to give input had an opportunity to give their input. What that resulted in was me meeting with over 40 community members and key leaders from different organizations. They represented over 20 different groups, and that's looking at, you know, the schools, we met with representatives from the town, we met with community organizations that help youth, we've met with senior representatives, we met with the hospital, we met with the Coast Guard, we met with a wide range of people representing users and non-users of the, you know, current aquatic facilities, to try to get an understanding of what would make the pool use better, and what would make you want to use a pool. Some of the key takeaways and things that I heard is there was a strong desire for aquatics amongst all groups. I didn't hear anyone say, no, we couldn't use a pool. Everyone said, well, I could use a pool this way, or I could use this type of pool. And again, that was from organizations representing the youth and the young adults, all the way up to the seniors. That brings us to the multi-generational. There's a lot of stress to teach kids to swim, there's a need for a family oriented facility that everyone could go to, and a lot of demand and need for senior programming. There was also, it's key to be the indoor aquatics or indoor water opportunities. For recreational swimming, we have the beaches in the summer, but due to the winters, a lot of these programs won't be offered year-round, we certainly need year-round opportunities for a lot of those wellness programs and also to learn to swim. The biggest concern that I heard from any group, or most of the groups, was ongoing costs. It wasn't the ability to fund this type of program, but it was the opportunities or ability to sustain this, and make sure that facility would be open for the next 30 to 50 years. And that's certainly what I believe is a crucial part of the decision-making process. It's not about how much is it going to cost to build, it's really about what's it going to take to sustain this. And the last piece, on the very bottom right, it says limited quality pool space available. And the reason I had to put quality was there is pool space available in town. But what the quality meant was the available times for different programs is limited, because the space is limited, and again, that space is limiting to what types of programs you can offer, because it doesn't meet the minimum requirements. And so there's a real struggle to get pool time, and even when you get that pool time, it's not necessarily meeting the minimum requirements of your program. So to balance the what I heard and everyone's opinion, we also looked at demographics. So the demographics are based around the geographic center of the town of Falmouth, and we looked at drive times from that area. And the reason is people's willingness to come to aquatic facilities is based on their travel time, and their willingness to participate is based on how far they have to go. So we looked at concentric ranks from 0 to 3 minutes, 3 to 5 minutes, and 5 to 10 minutes. And that's our first category, because the biggest impact for aquatic users is going to be within 10 minute drive time of that facility. We also looked at the town as a whole, which is down here on the bottom. So within 10 minutes, and also the town as a whole, both represent about 31,000 people in terms of total population. And that's an interesting number to note, because back in the early 90s, the NRPA, the National Recreations, Parks and Recreations Association, tried to establish a standard for a number of pools a community needed based on their population. That number was one for every 20,000. The problem wasn't that they never defined what that pool was and what an aquatic facility could be. And so that never really caught on. And so some of the things we need to look at is, yes, we can meet the needs, we don't need one and a half pools here, we could do with one aquatic facility, but may have multiple bodies of water, may need multiple opportunities for different people. The next, you can see the highlighted area, the next, we also added the 10 to 15 minutes. Now, the 10 to 15 minutes is not your high impact area, but as we looked at the other aquatic opportunities around, which we'll show later in the presentation, you'll see that there's no competing facility within 30 minutes of this town center, which means within 15 minutes of this, the closest aquatic facility would be this direction. And so we went ahead and added that, so within that 15 minute drive time, were over 50,000 people who would utilize this aquatic facility. We also did want to note that the projections are showing that this population is trending down. However, after talking with many of the groups, I know the town is making some investments towards the future, and of course, they never know that information, so I wanted to point it out, it's something that we need to watch and keep our eye on, but we're certainly aware of it, but I do think that the projections are a little early to be accurate. The next part is looking at the age. One part I do want to talk on the population, this is based on the US Census. This does not include any of our visitation, which would only add to the opportunities for recreational visits during the summer months when we have the tourist market here. The next part is the age. And again, the age is important, because not only how the facility is going to be used, who's going to be using it, but also, you know, that demand for repeat usage. Our highest demand for that repeat usage, those family usage, is with our young adults and our young communities. So we looked at the under 20 population. Now granted, not everyone in that category is going to come by themselves, they'll come with their parents, but they're the ones who want to go to the pool. While we're below the national average at just under 20%, where the national average is 27% of the population in that age category, that still represents almost 6,000 youth in the town of Falmouth that need to learn to swim and use an aquatic facility. So the next part we wanted to look at is, well, if we have below the national average and under 20, where does that make it up? And we can see the first tick up from the national average we saw was 45 to 54, that's only about 1%. And then when we go to 55 and over, each one of those categories is significantly higher than the national average. So we know we have an aging population, we have a high senior population at 55 and over. Now, we defined seniors of 55 and over, but I guarantee that the senior who's 55 or 60 doesn't want to do the same activities as the senior who's 90. So what we typically say is we have three categories of seniors right now, three classifications of seniors, each one having a different desire, and the youngest category, of course, being very active and very fit. The next part we looked at is the income, and this is basically ability to pay to utilize a recreation facility, and looking at discretionary spending. So we looked at per cap income and also median household income. You can see on the right side, there's the index numbers, so the US national average is set at 1.0, and anything over 1 is your percent higher, and then anything below would be your percent lower. So in every category, we are above the national average for income, which means there is opportunity for discretionary spending for a recreational facility. We did look at a little bit more detail, you can see right here about how that is made up. And so we understand that there's a diverse income level, we do have some low income houses, we do have some low income families, we have the Coast Guard, which may have limited spending, but with families that would want to use this type of facilities, we need to be considerate about that when we're developing fees, but there's certainly opportunity for that discretionary spending at this type of facility. The next part is the sports participation, and I always find this very interesting. This is, again, from our demographic database, and they do surveys every year, and it's asking, this is representing the percentage of your population that participated in these given activities over the past 12 months. So we looked at a variety of activities that may be incorporated with this type of facility, like aerobics, basketball, jogging, Pilates, and then of course, swimming, volleyball, walking, weightlifting, and yoga. The interesting thing here is we see that it's above the national average in most categories, which shows that we're a very fit community. And again, there's more demand and more usage of this type of facility. But it's really interesting is that the swimming made it above the national average, even though there's not a facility for them to utilize to participate in swimming each year. So somehow, the town of Falmouth is finding a way to swim, because they desire it so much, even though we're not offering that facility, which makes you only imagine, you know, what this would do if there was a facility within 10 minutes that they could utilize. So again, talking about the limitation, this is a map representing major aquatic facilities in the area. Now what does major mean? We had to define some sort of minimum requirement, and so that is a six lane 25 yard lap pool, the minimum requirement for high school NC2A, and what opportunities, what facilities offer that or more. These are the four facilities, and again, they're about 17, 18, up to 24 miles away from town center, this is using Google Maps as their drive time, and each of those represents over 30 minutes of drive time. So again, within that 15 minute category, we have 50,000 people who, going this direction would be closer, and anyone currently in the town would have to drive over 30 minutes to utilize an aquatic facility, a major aquatic facility. So how does all this information relate to the needs of Falmouth? The biggest area that we heard was there's a need for senior programming. I saw that not only in the interviews and what I heard, but also represented in the demographics. We need both aquatic based and also any type of wellness opportunities for seniors. This would include the need for shallow warm water, easy access with ramp entries, and also dedicated senior activity space, somewhere where they can utilize this facility, but maybe also participate in their own activities at other times. This could be done in conjunction with this facility, or it could be offsite to current senior standard, we work on bussing them over. We have seen these combined, and I'll show you some examples later. We also need instructional areas, we need to teach our kids how to swim, we need to make them safe around the water. Again, this would be the need for shallow warm water to introduce those kids to swim, space to introduce them in a non-threatening manner, so again, we're introducing them to the water, let them be, let it be fun, let it be exciting for them, and not just throw them into the beach and say, all right, ready to swim. And then also, we need to be able to get to advanced swim levels and teach that life safety skill with the opportunity for deep water and a longer race course. We also need fitness spaces, both aquatic and land-based, we have a very fit community, we need more opportunities for year-round fitness opportunities, which would include spaces like the lap pool, this would include not only the fitness swimming, but also the recreational leagues. And also, by making it the minimum requirements for competitive swimming, we offer a new revenue source by offering that competitive teams, also an economic impact by driving swim meets. The other parts beyond the aquatics, we'd also see the cardio and weightlifting areas would help bring that family oriented, make sure there's something for everyone at this facility, and also offering group exercise classes, because we did see that all those categories are also above the national average in terms of annual participation. And also some community and general use spaces, multi-generational family oriented opportunities, things, again, to make sure that the whole family can come and spend a day together, meetings, classroom birthday party areas, we thought, we heard a lot of demand for birthday parties at this type of facility. And we also heard some comments about dropping childcare, so a stay-at-home mom could use this facility during the day during the non-peak hours. So how do those needs relate to the space requirements? Basically, what would the options look like moving forward? The first thing I see would be a warm water multipurpose pool. This could accommodate both, it would have shallow areas, fitness lap lanes, the moving water, like the current channel, the water vortexes, and this would accommodate not only the senior programming and wellness aspect, but also the introductory level swim lessons. We'd also need a lap pool for those recreational leads, the advanced instructional programming, continuing that life safety skill, the fitness training, and also the competitive teams. We would need fitness and group exercise rooms to offer that dry land training aspect and dry memberships, also multipurpose rooms for, again, we could have classrooms to teach those water safety instructions, the lifeguard training, they could also be birthday party rooms or general community meeting rooms. We need some dedicated senior space, the seniors need some new space, need some places to call home, call their own, and we also need childcare space. And we don't mean that this is going to be a daycare where you come and drop your kids off before work, but it's more you drop them off for an hour, see what you work out onsite. So the next part is some example facilities across the country that I've worked on, just showing how they've taken these new trends in aquatics and incorporated in their community. The first one is called the Summit, and this is actually a new senior center that was done in Grand Prairie, Texas. And the reason I wanted to show this was for a couple reasons. One, you can see that this is a senior center, only members of the community over the age of 50 are allowed to get memberships here, but includes fitness areas, classrooms, group exercise rooms, indoor walking track, locker rooms with saunas, a full kitchen, they have everything. They have the warm water pool with lap lanes, they also have the moving water, they have the hot water spa, and they actually did a vortex that goes in two directions, because just like you would use a track, maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you want to run one direction, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, you go another, they do that in the water with, for the senior programs. The other thing I want to comment here is I did an aquatic facilities master plan for the entire community for a 10-year phase, and this was the number one item that was selected, because they also had an aging community. Again, it was a young aging community that didn't necessarily want to participate in the existing senior center, they wanted new opportunities, and so this was the top of their priority of all the aquatics in town. The next one is the NRH Center, and the reason I want to show this is this is a community that really wanted to bundle as many goods as possible together. So this is a community center, recreation center, a senior center, and a pool, and a banquet hall, all combined into one. And it seems like that's a lot going on, but it's very easy to be done, and all those go together because they help bring a lot of synergies. So this includes fitness centers, a walking track, group fitness rooms, personal training and massage, it also has an indoor pool with water slides, lap lanes, the fitness aspect. You can see here in this picture, in these lap lanes, there's actually a water aerobics class going on, while it's being run by the senior center, which is right down the hall. And then also, you see the current channel, and there's actually the water aerobics classes going on in here as well, because they're using it for that resistance training. So here are the aquatic areas, these are actually three shots of the front. Each one has its own dedicated entrance. Off to the far left is our general entrance for the aquatics and community center side. Here is actually the banquet hall entrance, and then off to the very far right was the senior center dedicated entrance with its own drop-off zone and also its own parking lot. So while each of these are part of the same building, allows easy access back and forth, they all operate independently, so they bring synergies, there are some cost savings, but they still offer everything that each of those groups wanted. You can see here on the bottom is actually what the senior center is, it's about 10,000 square feet of senior space, it has a kitchen, meeting areas, also individual offices for them to meet with lawyers, one-on-one in private, and then also just lounge areas and a fireplace. This next one is the Don Rodenbaum Auditorium. The reason I want to show this was this was a partnership that's been very successful for the past 10 years about, between a school and a town. And the school had a need to offer competitive lap lanes, that 25 yard course for their swim team, and the town needed opportunities to teach kids how to swim, so they decided to get together and build a facility. It includes two bodies of water, the 25 yard by 25 meter competitive pool that I showed you earlier, and also a 6,700 square foot leisure pool. So on the other side of these garage doors right here is the lap pool, you can see over here, off to this side was actually was the leisure pool. So they're right next to each other, they operate as one facility, but it's two bodies of water, so we have both the cold water and the warm water, we can do instruction, lesson programming, also recreational and competitive use. They have birthday party rooms, climbing walls, and again, it was a joint use facility, their goal was that the facility would be able to generate 80% of its operating costs through operational revenues, and that last 20% would be split between the school and the town. So here's some other things, again, incorporating those dry spaces into the aquatic facility as well. We very rarely see a standalone aquatic facility today, again, going on to that cost burden, so bundling with more amenities. They included climbing wall, a lot of meeting rooms, the group exercise rooms, and also the fitness spaces. The last one is the Upper Valley Aquatic Center, this is in White River Junction, Vermont. We brought this one for a couple reasons. It's very similar to the Don Rodenbaum Auditorium in terms of it offered two bodies of water, both the competitive pool and the recreational pool. This one's a little smaller, but again, it has the 25 yard by 25 meter competitive pool, and the specs here are seeing the group exercise suites, cardio and weight equipment, and birthday party rooms. The reason I want to share this was this was, actually was brought up, we did this study for them through a non-for-profit, similar to what we're working with here in Falmouth. And that non-for-profit found a private donation, both to fund the capital and also to operate the, or to subsidize the facility a small amount each year. This facility is trending towards being self-sustaining, so they're hoping to not have to use that endowment moving forward, but it has been successful.[1718.75] The town partnered with that non-for-profit to help donate land and also help, you know, promote the facility, garner support. This one also has a good economic impact, there's two hotels nearby that are partnered with the facility for swim meets, you can get a discount, and the facility actually gained some money revenues from that. And I also wanted to point out that we've heard from several of our local swim team that they go here three or four times a year, bringing their whole family for two to four days, so that's a lot of outside-town travel that's from Falmouth going up there, and we certainly expect to see that similar type of experience here if this type of facility were built.
All right, I'll turn it back over to Jim.
Thank you. Thanks. So what we're going to, what we're going to cover now is our, so what are our, what are the next steps for us? And I think we've gotten a very good view of what could happen here, what's happened in other words, and how it relates to overall what's happening in the aquatics industry. The next step is to really, you know, the, we have a detailed need study, and we have some sort of ideas, some general ideas of what is sustainable here, and the take-home message is that a facility such as the one you just saw, the White River Junction facility, is the type of facility that is sustainable. However, our next talks are really to get a lot more detail on that, and start putting some sort of meat on the bones of that, of that framework, okay? And so this is, we're going to start by develop, whoops, by developing a facility concept and a sustainable business plan, all right? First step in doing that is all of these, we have to, it costs money for us to do this stuff. Kevin is very good, but he's not here because he loves Falmouth, he does love Falmouth, that's not the primary reason he's here. Council, we need to raise money, money for our next phases, not only for the professional health and the analysis, but we have to start setting the stage for what would eventually be a very large capital fundraising campaign to, to move forward with whatever decision is made as far as what to build this town. That, those funds, we need about, we need to raise about sixty thousand dollars in funds, okay? And what, what we are asking today is that the town partner with us in that and contribute one quarter of that. So we are to ask the town, as a, as a partner in this next phase of our study, to contribute fifteen thousand dollars. We can talk about what that would be used for, et cetera, anytime you'd like. What are we going to do in that phase? We're going to determine in more detail the programming and facility needs. So this, what we see here, these stages capture the last two stages that Kevin had outlined in the councilman huntsaker process. So this is the last two stages, developing an operational model, including our revenue sources, we have to engage key potential partners, we have to have detailed talks with them about what each partner's needs and desires are, and how, how impossible we could meld those into one organizational unit or into one facility, and we have to evaluate those partnership models in a more quantitative fashion to make sure that it's a win-win for everyone, and it creates something that is financially sustainable. So that's the next, next phase. Following that becomes what, you know, we're getting there, the design, design and build. We have to decide on exactly what we're doing, we have to estimate our capital requirements, we, at that point, we'll formalize our organization, and that will partially come out of whatever partnership model we've decided. And right now, we're still operating and will continue to operate as long as we can under the umbrella of the Cape Cod Foundation, but at some point in time, we are going to have to break off and be our own not-for-profit organization. And then, this is the biggie, develop and initiate a fundraising campaign to make this happen, okay? And we're trying to set the stage for that. Then you get into finalizing your partnerships, specify design, design the facility, and then build it. And then finally, after that is done, add water, and we've got a facility, okay? So that's, you know, that's a summary, that's a sort of a vision of what we can do here aquatically in Falmouth, with an aquatic center that, that sort of meets a very broad range of needs in the community. And, you know, a lot of people, since this is start, a lot of people ask, why should the community invest, or why should the community really get behind an effort like this? And we have a website, falmouthaquatics.org, in which we invite the community to provide answers to that question. So rather than my sitting up here and expousing a bunch of reason, I'm going to read to you a few of the things people in the community have said about why we want to do something like this. One, one community member said, "Swimming is a lifelong activity that all ages can participate in. It is an exercise that does not stress the body, but rather can be a part of healing injuries. It is an exercise to help combat the rising rate of obesity affecting adult, both adults and children, and create multiple, and creating multiple health problems. It can be a solitary exercise or a social one, a workout or a relaxing interlude. Having a community pool will offer these possibilities to everyone, and will make Falmouth a much healthier and happier community." Another person in our community said, "Swimming and aerobic, and water aerobics are what we keep me moving and comfortable since I have osteoarthritis. It is an essential part of my routine as there are limited options for my exercise. I'd really like a clean, well-nourished and easily accessible pool." Another member of our community, "I am a big runner, enjoy competing in many road races. However, as I get a bit older," we do have an aging population, "I need to mix in other non-packed exercise routines, and swimming is perfect." Everyone, and he capitalizes everyone, "I talk to wants a real pool in Falmouth, and people who visit Falmouth are shocked that we don't have one yet." Two days ago, we got some input on our website, "I swim every day, and the lack of a real pool in Falmouth is a major reason that right now I can't see staying here forever." And that is a very sad commentary. A pool would add so much to the quality of life. I'm reminded of this every time I swim in a community pool in my travels. They are vibrant centers of the community for young and old. And one parent said to me this morning, she simply said, "Swimming is an amazing lifelong skill." You know, there are so many things, there are so many people we could impact, so much good we could do for this community by really developing a quality center. You know, Kevin mentioned, we're, we're surrounded by, by water on three sides, you know, it's irresponsible for us not to teach our community, both young and old, to be safe and be skillful in the water. We can have a positive impact, if we've seen, on people in all, in all phases and in all contexts of their lives. You know, our studies have shown that we have a broad need in the community, and very importantly, they've also shown that the type of facility, and I'll point back to the White River Junction facility, because that's one I actually, I spent time there when my daughter's swimming there, when, that's the type of facility that is well within the reach and is, like, could be financially sustainable in this community, okay? It's a great way, what we're, what we're looking at is a private not-for-profit model that builds synergistic and sustainable partnerships. And a small example of that is, you know, we've come to you today saying we need sixty thousand dollars for the next phases of this effort to develop this facility, would you partner with us and provide a quarter of that? It's a great way of leveraging the community's funds, it's a great way of leveraging the resources and the capabilities of different organizations that we partner with, okay? Economically, as Kevin mentioned, there's also an economic benefit to the town. I've spent several weekends up in White River Junction, Vermont, in the middle of the winter, where it's actually quite cold, along with probably about five or six hundred other families as their kids have spent anywhere between two and four days swimming there. We could have people come in here to, to this town and filling our hotels, filling our restaurants, and helping the businesses in this town in what for us is a real slow season in the town. You know, every, everyone likes success, you know? And we will succeed in doing this. The organization we have, it is, is a volunteer-based organization, but we've been very, very professional in our conduct and how we've gone about pursuing this dream of ours, this vision of ours. We paired with the best people in the business, councilman huntsaker, to help us through this process. And very importantly, you know, I hear a lot of comment about, we don't have the people here in Falmouth that can do this. And what I feel and what I find is, and what we are tapping into and beginning to engage with is there's a tremendous reservoir here in Falmouth of people who are very accomplished in their lives, either here in Falmouth, things they have done, or elsewhere in their professional and private lives, things they have done. Those people are here, they are used to making things happen and make things successful, and they are willing and able to help make this a successful endeavor. So, you know, we could partner as a community, we can come together as a community, come behind an effort like this, and really strive to build an excellent facility in the tradition of Falmouth. Falmouth is known for excellence in doing things well. Build an excellent facility, good quality facility that can really do something for Falmouth for us. So thank you very much for your time, and it's great to have the opportunity to talk with you. Are there any questions for either me or Kevin?
Well, I'm going to open it up a little bit to the board, a little bit of questions and maybe some, some discussion if that's all right.
Sure.
Put the lights back on. Let me preface a little bit that I, I spent four years of my public service life working on a public-private partnership, that was the Falmouth Youth Hockey Facility. And at the time, there were many folks that I'm sure they're involved with your group now, wanted an aquatics facility at the same time. It was disappointing to me that we weren't able to pull off the, both the aquatic facility with, with, with the ice arena. We were trying to fledge a public-private partnership, similar to what you say. I will say that I learned a lot from experiences in life. And public-private partnerships sound wonderful, they get to be a little cumbersome, not from the public standpoint, but from the private standpoint. And, and what I mean by that is, give you an illustration, if you want us to give you fifteen thousand dollars, with the town puts that money up, we then become the ones that would issue the RFP. It's not the fact that we would give you fifteen thousand dollars, and then it's a donation for you to go out. The downside with that is, for us in government to do that, we would be the ones having to issue an RFP. We can't appropriate, I don't believe, and I turned to the town manager, to an outside source to give you a donation for you to do the study, because we're using taxpayers' funds. And we need, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer to make sure that the process goes as open and as possible. And when I say open, the last feasibility study, which I'm sure you've been able to look at, it's in the library, and it was disappointing that said that the pool aspect of it was not profitable. I think that you're bringing new vigor, enthusiasm, and of course, a different aspect, because I believe we were missing the competitive aspect of, of the pool at that time. I'm surely not ranting on this parade. Let me say that I believe in a public-private partnership, and, but in the early stages, I don't think it's to your, your advantage. I think as we get on the pike, it will be to your advantage to explore the public-private partnership in the form of the fact that the town may have some land, an opportunity for you to leverage the monies that you have, so that we have some potential development opportunities. But those are questions you're going to have to ask. If you want us to partner with you, meaning our hands get tied because we have laws and regulations we have to do in this state to partner with you, we just couldn't give you the fifteen thousand dollars, it would be us that would be issuing the RFP. You'd be a partner with us, but I, I don't know whether you're willing to give up that control, because we'd be the ones that would actually be issuing the RFP for your feasibility study. We'd also have to go to town meeting, it's not something that the Board of Selectment could appropriate. This would be an article that would put forward. Timing, of course, might not fit your timeframe either. I'm trying to explain this all in an open setting, and the idea with that is, it's too late for the fall town meeting, so we'd be looking at spring town meeting at the earliest to be able to be a contributor towards that. And again, this would be something that would be standalone and would have a lot of discussion in the early stages. Learning from our mistakes, I think, would be better off if you came to us with a solid proposal and then you wanted to partner.
So partnership at a later stage in the process?
That's my, that's my personal opinion. I'm one of five votes here, but I'm trying to help you through the pitfalls of this. I know I see folks in the audience that Falmouth has a competing group that we want to why. You know, I've, I've met with them, and my suggestion to them were to join forces, because in this community, we have a lot of wants, but everything is timing, the economy is not at the best. You hit some major highlights to me, seniors, I mean, we have a senior center that's falling apart, that's on our long-range, five-year plan, that's something we want. This isn't even on our plan yet, so if we can tag it along with some other things, and maybe work together to try to come to something that we could all be proud of, that could provide an opportunity for everybody. My other suggestion would be maybe go to the schools, because one of your key factors you talk about is, you know, the partnership with, with schools. Unfortunately, with the Education Reform Act, we don't have the ability to spend their money and their budget dollars to make sure that we'd say we'll give you X amount and guarantee programming, so.
But those are the discussions we're seeking, I mean, those are the discussions for the next phase. I mean, that is, that is exactly what this next phase is about, is having that discussions with potential private, you know, potential other not-for-profit partners, discussions with, for example, the Falmouth Council on Aging, and, I mean, we've already had some preliminary discussions with them, simply trying to find out what their needs and what their desires are. Discussions with you, discussions with the schools, we, I mean, this is exactly what that next phase is about.
I mean, it's disheartening if folks find, we're really to look at how many people in this community know how to swim. I mean, we offer swim lessons on our beaches, but the people usually take advantage of them are the summer folks, not necessarily the people who live here, because they're all working so hard, they're all trying to provide a living, they go to, they're not here vacationing, they don't actually always have that extra free time. So to me, this is a wonderful opportunity for folks, because we are surrounded by water and take advantage of it. I'm going to be your, your best cheerleader, but I also want to help you move through this process, and it's not going to be easy, because we have a lot of things that are competing for a lot of dollars on the town side, and, but I will say, a recent success story is the Falmouth Ice Arena. They put that whole project together with, with creativity, I guess is the best way we can say. And hopefully, along the way, this board was able to help them, but would be more than I'm willing to help you, at least I know I will. But, so there's some questions that you need to ask as we move forward, and I would suggest, maybe you talk to the town manager in regard to that funding piece, that might be something that you want to talk about. Anybody else on the board have something that want to throw in here?
You've hit many of the points, I'm just not, I mean, I think the financial thing, there's nothing we can do until the earliest spring town meeting, and then our hands being tied. I'm not sure if there's any way that we can vote an endorsement of showing the support of the board without it having a financial thing, I'm not sure if that's even useful to you, but I would certainly be willing to entertain a vote to say that we, as a board, supported this.
I think from a financial perspective, you mentioned the Falmouth Ice Arena, and I think they were an excellent example of what can be done without public funds. And with all honesty, I'm not inclined to support any public funds for private ventures. However, I mean, this is a fantastic idea, it looks beautiful, but the Falmouth Ice Arena, I mean, I have children who have ice skated, my wife skates, plays hockey, and yet I would not support and did not support the, the use of public funds for that. They managed to overcome some of the issues, they had actually come to the town looking for public funds, looking for that public-private partnership. The town turned them down, and in the end, they managed to make it happen without public funds, and I, I would say that's a perfect model to try to emulate, to try to follow. I think at this point, as, you know, Mr. Murphy said, there are a tremendous number of competing interests for public dollars, and even fifteen thousand dollars, I imagine that we could come up with a, a very long list of things that we'd love to fund with fifteen thousand dollars. It sounds like pennies, but we're pinching them real tight around here. And I have a hard time justifying, with all of the other projects and, and things that need to be addressed, and, you know, one of the earlier ones that we talked about tonight was White's Landing, and we're quite, you know, public access to the water right there, and we're still trying to work with the state just to come up with the money for that. Fifteen thousand dollars could make or break a project like that, so. And that is a, it's, it's the public, the town's responsibility to address and to maintain public infrastructure, so, just my two cents, thank you.
Yeah?
Well, yeah. I'm, I was just thinking back to the Olympic celebration we had for Eric Vent back a, a few weeks ago, and the, the first part of the day, which was early morning, eight o'clock, was a swim event, and it was for kids aged four to like fifteen or so.
To high school.
Yeah, at high school. And there were like eighty children there, eighty kids in the morning, and it was absolutely fantastic. And the enthusiasm that they have for swimming and for competitive swimming, of course, this was just after the London, London Olympics were over, so they were all, the ones who really liked to swim, were very much taken by all of that, and their enthusiasm was incredible. So I, I see this as two things. I see it as a benefit to the people, as you say, the goal is to have a healthier community. But I see it also as a major economic development option for the town as well. I mean, there's no question about the revenues that could come to the town with a successful project like this. As you said, the hotels, you know, the motels, the restaurants, they, I mean, the, the revenues that would come to the town, there would be certain taxes that would go along with that, that would come to the town that we didn't have before. So I see it as a huge economic development project, as well as a project that truly benefits everyone in the community in one way or another, whether it's just going to a kid's birthday party, you know, there, or, or whether it's actually being a competitive swimmer, a recreational swimmer, whatever that might be. Now, how the project evolves in terms of partnerships, and whether the town can be that partner, I think that has yet to come to light, I, I don't think we're, we're quite there yet.
I agree. And that is, as I said, that is, that is really what the next phase is about, I mean, it's defining those partnerships. Having more serious, I mean, we have sat down with Jill Bishop and the Falmouth Council on Aging to hear about what their priorities would be in a senior center, because, I mean, part of this of making successful synergistic partnerships is you, is you each have, I mean, their primary interest is not in aquatics, but we may, you know, with the benefits of aquatics for seniors, we may be able to find a very synergistic relationship. You know, and I think it's having those discussions, each, each group being very, very open and direct about what their, what their agenda is, and what their, what their priorities are, and what their needs are, and then looking for the ones that are synergistic, can help you do something that's better than either of you could do. help you do something that's better than either you could do alone. And I think those are the discussions that we have.
And then, you know, we have the town's own recreation department.
Yeah.
And then the school system, which is already been talked about. I mean, the, the physical education piece of the school system. And, I mean, there's, there are a whole lot of partners there, and a lot depends, obviously, the partners that would be able to use the facility and, but at the same time, what their fundraising capacity might be is, is another story, and we don't really know that yet.
We don't know that.
But I think it's really exciting, and I think it's, I thank you for putting this together because this is just another value-added asset to the town of Thelmoth that will make the people who live here, give them another option to stay healthy, and it will certainly be an attraction to people who already like coming here. Now they have another reason to come here. So I really applaud your work, and it's great.
Just a couple of points that Pat, Pat brought up, the economic development aspect of it. I wholeheartedly believe that it, it could be a boom to the town in certain periods of the year. May I suggest that one of the, the groups that you could reach out to would be the Thelmoth EDIC, which is the economic development arm of our community. I happen to be one of the, you know, the board's representative on that, but if you could speak to Mike Galasso and maybe get on their agenda and, because in fact, it could have an impact on, on our economic development. I just don't want to discourage you by what Brent has, had to say because let me, let me explain to you one other thing. The public-private partnerships have worked. I mean, this is on a smaller scale, but our Thelmoth Dog Park was a public-part, private partnership. There was a need there. We had an opportunity to provide some property. Folks came up with the funding. So I'm not being a pessimist. I just want to make sure that I can tell you that you have my support, but the tax dollars are going to be one thing. If we have surplus land, you know, I look out and I see some housing folks here. We provide surplus land for certain things that are, provide a great quality of life in this community. To me, this will be a quality of life issue, something that would affect us in the years to come. So I surely am not going to say that I wouldn't consider a public-private partnership as we move forward.
We have to very carefully define what's appropriate.
Great. Do I have any public comment? Mr. Putnam? If you guys could just step back because they're going to use the microphone, they might be asking questions.
Okay.
You gave them a lot of information here, so...
Not as tall as you. Just strange, I'm used to being the tallest person. Andrew Putnam, Precinct Nine, Chairman of the Town's Affirmative Action Committee. I want to make a couple of points. I'm really, I really do thank you guys for this. This is absolutely amazing. And yes, I'm one of the gentleman's sons who played hockey until he quit because he couldn't do it anymore. I was a picky seven-year-old. Anyway, I've swam at a lot of different facilities, so this is really exciting. I think this is a great opportunity for the town. And I have a lot of friends right now currently, although I'm going to miss this part of it, who are now starting to finish up college, and I'm almost at that point, too. So I won't be able to utilize those wonderful college facilities I get to go visit. But that's another story. The idea of having a pool in Thelmoth is a great idea because you're right, it will bring a lot of economic benefits to the town. It does have health and wellness, health and wellness benefits for the town as well. But the thing that concerns me the most, and it's something I've started to learn a lot more about recently, and of course, I'll get to the financial aspect of it in a second, is that the town does have a lot of needs, and you put it best when you said there's a lot of organizations that are vying for public funding right now. And I've, I'm watching every year, of course, as funds get cut, you know, and it does kind of pay me a little to watch my little sister growing up in this town, and it's, each year has passed, not all of the same programs that were provided to me when I was growing up are now being provided to my younger sister. And that's understandable. These things happen. You go through tough times. The economy goes down, the economy goes up. I get it. However, we, and this is where I would stress to the aquatics group here to do a little more research here and probably reach out to a couple of other groups, is that there are those other organizations out there currently in the town that are looking to do things. And I know that Thelmoth Wants a Y is one of those organizations that's looking to address the needs of a community. And it was really exciting to see that there are aquatic centers that do have kind of everything put together because when I think of an aquatic center in a town, you know, with all the places I've traveled to, thanks to my friends and, and all the different facilities, I've been to a lot of them, being private facilities by universities, but some of them being YMCA's, it just makes sense to me, especially when we are in tough economic times, to partner with a group like that or partner with any organization that's trying to bring a multitude of programs together under one roof. You know, we want to talk about the financial aspect of it. It does concern me. I don't want to see us build a pool, of course, and then years down the line, we don't have the ability to continue to maintain it because we don't have the finances to maintain it. You know, and it's, it does concern me. I look at the REC Center, and I don't really want to point this out as an example, but it is a good example. The REC Center is a great facility, but it's drastically underutilized. And I don't want to see the same thing happen, but sort of on a financial level, where we have a facility, it's used a lot, but the finances just aren't there to support it. We do have, of course, households that have more income than the average household in the nation here, but we also do have a higher standard of living and a higher cost of living here on Cape Cod compared to right over the bridge. And I can call up a couple of friends who contest to that right away. There's a reason they do not live on this side of the bridge. So these are just all concerns I have, you know, nothing, I don't want to be extremely negative, you know, I am excited about a pool and I do want to see one. I hope to see one, of course, in the next year because I'd be down there a lot. But I want to see us, you know, I want to see you guys, actually, more particularly you as a group, look at these organizations and try and partner with them because if we can have a pool facility, and you can have all this other stuff as well, you know, all this family-oriented kind of organizations and programs, and I'm trying to think of some, but you're a father and I'm not yet, so you have better examples. But if you can see that all together, that's probably going to benefit the town a lot more, and it, it probably will be more financially feasible for us as a town to be able to support a one-stop community kind of building. And again, like I said, have a pool in that building, too, so. So that's, that's my input. I would, I would, of course, you know, I'd, I'd, of course, stress that the board put off this recommendation just until, until, of course, and, and suggest to you guys that you go and reach out to these other organizations and, and come back with this overall plan of all these organizations together, all these different programs together, and kind of a one-stop facility for everything. So, because like I said, I want to see a pool, but I'd love to see everything kind of coordinated together. I don't really have much more to say here with that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I...
You shook it. Yep.
One of the things, I mean, very glad you brought up the issue of Thelmoth Wants a Y. A partnership with Cape Cod Y remains on the table as one of our options. Okay. I said, and one of our early mandates was to investigate and evaluate all organizational partnership options. We are still doing that. That is a part of our next phase, is really getting more rigorous about that partnership. Stacy Pugh, the CEO of Cape Cod YMCA, was a member of our, participated in our need study. I was interviewed two weeks ago with, under the Cape Cod Y's need study for the community. So there is communication between the groups. That is still something that is on the table, a partnership. And I think it takes us evaluating as we go through our next phases, what, what the synergy, whether there could be synergy there and whether it could be a win-win type situation. Okay? That being said, the two groups right now have two different goals. Our focus is on aquatics. Our focus is on, it is about the pool, to quote, to quote a person in the community. And it's central to our goal. We will not build a facility that does not have a pool. That's, that's not our goal. Okay? The Cape Cod, the YMCA has a much broader social mandate, they have a much broader mandate of programs. And in, in the statements that Stacy Pugh has made publicly, you know, you, it could be a long time before you get a pool. You could have Y's, and there are a whole, you know, to say there is a Y is there a whole different range of Y's. And you can have Y's without pools, Y's with pools, et cetera. So it is a different, there are different set of core goals to the two organizations, and I think evaluating a partnership takes evaluating whether or not those goals can be synergistic. One of the reasons we retained Councilman Hunsaker wasn't certainly wasn't the only reason, but one of the reasons is that YMCA chapters are one of their largest single client groups. They have a lot of experience with working with YMCA's. They have a lot of experience with looking at different models. There's not, there, there aren't just models of a facility is a Y or it is not a Y. There is a whole spectrum of models between those. They have a lot of experience, and they are one of the best third parties that we know that can advise us on the pros and cons of such a partnership. So that is one. So that is on the table. We are as knowledgeable as we can possibly be working with a third party to understand what those, what those options are and what that would be for us.
Great. Nancy?
I don't know. I may be able to be heard if I shout loudly enough. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think essentially, Mr. Murphy really covered my mental reservations about this. I think the timing is very poor. I'm very curious about how you can possibly say that Thelmoth is above average in income. We have constant pressure to build affordable housing. Lots of people have nice properties, but I think a lot of us are what my mother called land poor. We may have a valuable piece of property, but that property only counts if we sell it. And I think that the idea of these pools in these presentations are absolutely wonderful. Both my husband and I have profited from being able to use I, this hospital, therapy pool here and he in a wonderful facility in Titusville, Florida, which is developed through the hospital. And I obviously am in the older group of people who are listening to your presentation. And I definitely am so glad that the town, due to the regulations which Mr. Murphy brought forward, I'm a town meeting member. I have lots of things that I am going to have to vote on, and I do not think at this time that funding from the town to a project like this, wonderful it is, is all appropriate. I can't, myself, I would do some financial forecasting. I think it's going to be at least five years before the economic climate improves. I think for doing private funding for a project like this, I may underestimate the amount of cash floating around in this town that people can put to this pool, but I don't think it's out there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nancy. All right. Any other public comment? I'd like to thank you for your presentation, and please stay in touch. May I suggest you sit down at some point with the town manager, also touch base with the EDIC and the schools as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is vote to delete the position of Assistant Superintendent of Parks and Forestry. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board will recall that recently we had a discussion on this back at your last meeting in which the board had approved the creation of the new position of Deputy Director of Public Works. Again, that was back in your meeting of October 1st. At that time, we discussed the existing position of Assistant Superintendent of Parks and Forestry, which is vacant and which is being proposed for deletion. In so doing, by deleting this vacant position, organizationally, the effect, of course, is would be neutral as to total management positions within Public Works. This is also an item, as the board's aware, in the November town meeting warrant that would be consistent with the direction that has been laid out to the board. So I would, we, we had not scheduled, due to my oversight, a formal vote by this board to delete this existing position that is currently vacant, although we did, as I noted, have to create the position, vote to create the position of Deputy Director of Public Works. So I would so recommend to the board, if that would be your pleasure at this time, to complete that process.
Any questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Move approval to delete the position.
Motion to delete the position of the assistant...
Assistant Superintendent of Parks and Forestry.
Assistant, right. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Sure.
And what would be the effect of us deleting it and then not having the passage in town meeting of the Deputy Director?
Well, if, if that position were not approved, I could certainly request this board to rethink your position. However, you know, organizationally, we've determined that this assistant position is not necessary, and that, that fundamental concept would not change even without the position of Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm just bringing it forward at this time because I think there's a synergy here with deleting one management position and creating another one, but it would not cause me to, to rethink the need for this organizationally overall.
I certainly would support this deletion and really, really hope that the town meeting supports the creation of the Deputy Director. That makes a lot of sense.
And may I say that over the years, we've created a lot of positions without deleting those other positions. So quote-unquote, they're on the books, and I think this is a good policy to, as we move forward, to make sure that we clean them up because, of course, there are folks, specifically the union representatives, would like all positions filled, whether or not, even though we might have reorganized, until we delete them, they realize that those positions don't exist any longer. So we have a motion and a second, some discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Eyes have it. This, next item is to discuss and vote to award to the Thelmoth Housing Trust 761 T-Ticket Highway. Now, there are two parts of this, I believe. One is to award the, it was an RFP that was issued. To award the, the RFP?
Yes, the most, the most successful, most appropriate, the response to our RFPs, Mr. Chairman. And then the, then there's the companion piece, which the board should have received a hard copy of. We have, I have an additional one here if the board hasn't seen it. That would be subject to the final conference of Town Council, a purchase and sale agreement, which is the companion piece, of course, and really the whole concept behind moving forward with an RFP process to begin with.
Right. And I don't believe we'll actually sell the property until all of the RFP, conditions have been met.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct. So we'd look for a motion, two separate motions. One would be the awarding of the RFP to Thelmoth Housing Trust. That's motion one, and the second would be to authorize the town manager and the town council to enter into the purchase and sale for the property.
I'll move approval of the, of voting the award to the Thelmoth Housing Trust.
This is a motion.
Second.
A second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Eyes have it. Second part is to authorize the town manager and the town council to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the property, 761 T-Ticket Highway.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The eyes have it. Good luck.
Your work's cut out for you, huh?
Nice, guys.
You're busy, really busy.
Boy, you know, for years, you were, you were saying that we were dragging our feet on affordable housing projects. Now you have two within two weeks. Good luck in the...
It's great. You're very, you're very expeditious. I like your new...
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Next up is to approve the minutes of the meeting of October the 1st. Next up is to approve the minutes of the meeting of October the 1st. Anyone have any?
No, I don't have any corrections. I'll move approval of the minutes as printed.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. The next, the executive session minute of October the 1st, we're looking for a motion to approve and not release.
I move approval of the minutes and vote not to release them.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. We'll move to summary of actions. I'll go through the summary of actions, and we will hold certain items if you'd like to do so. First is to adopt the written recommendations. I'd like to hold item number one. Number two, discuss and vote requests for a waiver for Habitat for Humanity, 55 Glenwood Avenue. Number three, one-day liquor license, we need to hold that. Number four, we need to hold that. Number five has been withdrawn at this time. Number six, to approve N-Star petition to install one utility pool, 98 County Road, North Falmouth. Okay, and then number seven, vote to affirm the appointment of the Finance Committee representatives on the Capital Advisory Committee. And those representatives are Dutch Truett, and I believe it's-
Peter Giacomo.
Peter Giacomo. Peter was on the committee the first time as well. So we're looking to, to vote right now, item number two. Item number six, seven?
So move.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Item number one, vote to adopt the written recommendations and explanations that were disseminated to the entire board. Our recommendations were already put out there, but the actual written recommendations, the explanations, were prepared by Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper, and I believe everyone on the board got those. We do have one correction that the town manager suggests, and that is on Article 7, the Private Roads Bylaw. The last line should read, "The board does not recommend proceeding with this article until such time, until an implemation," pardon me, "until an implementation plan"
Until such implementation plan is completed?
Until such, yes, until such an implemation, an implementation plan is completed.
I would think it actually would be bylaw instead of article. So the board's not going to recommend proceeding with this bylaw until such an implementation plan is completed.
Well, we're voting in article, though.
Yeah.
It would create a bylaw, but we are voting in article.
An article.
Mr. Chairman? I think we are saying we want to go ahead with, I think that the idea of the bylaw-
We're not, we're not suggesting that we approve the bylaw at the town meeting. We're recommending indefinite postponement. That was our recommendation.
Right. That we're not proceeding with the, with the private roads, private roads bylaw. We don't want to go ahead with it right now.
I don't-
Well, we could say that we do not recommend proceeding with the bylaw in this article until such.
That's a good-
It's, all right.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I know what you're saying. It's, it's, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Perhaps I could clear, I think-
What, can you do it better?
Well, I don't know that I can do any better. Just two suggestions, nor would I suggest that. But I think it's just, it's Article 6, Mr. Chairman, as opposed to 7, just to mind a clarification.
Article 6, I'm sorry.
Perhaps if you just drop the word article entirely and make the sentence without it. Does not recommend proceeding with this until such time.
That works.
That might-
Yeah.
Or even give it with this as proceeding.
Cover it generic.
Just proceeding.
Or proceeding, yeah.
Proceeding, okay.
Until such an implementation either is or has been completed.
Okay. So let's, let's vote on this one individually, and then we'll come back if there's any other changes.
I'll make a motion as just read.
Make a motion to-
The board does not recommend proceeding until such an implementation plan is completed.
Okay, would that, would that change?
Would that change.
Okay, so there's a motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Great. Any other issues that they want to go to, at press, but the, any other changes?
Article 30. If we don't have anything before that. I'm not sure if this is a typo thing, but explanation, this position is outgrowth of the Board of Selectmen's Workshop on Selfish Resources. If approved at this town meeting and filled early in the calendar year, I think we need now a noun. The position will be-
That's pretty good. I thought you were a math teacher. Okay. So you're suggesting-
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If I may, and I apologize, I had drafted that up in response to working on the, working on the printed copy and had not, not been translated to your copy, if I may-
Go ahead.
Intrude, Mr. Chairman. Just suggested this position is an outgrowth of the Board of Selectmen's recent, maybe perhaps adding the word recent, to workshop on selfish resources, period. If approved at this town meeting, comma, this position will be filled, and drop the word and, this position will be, you'd be adding that, early in the calendar year, and then add the word and again before will, will be devoted to working diligently in selfish propagation, and then the rest would, I think, remain in place.
Perfect.
Perhaps Selectmen that would meet the concern that you raised, and thank you for doing so, my oversight.
So Doug, do you want to make a motion that has amended-
The Article 30 would now be worded, adding the word recent before workshop in the first sentence, and a second sentence to read, if approved at this town meeting, comma, this position will be, will be filled early in the calendar year, and will be devoted to working diligently, and then continues on.
Okay. So that's your motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Next item, is there anything else?
37.
Okay.
It reads, in Article 20, da-da-da, propose to create a new section enforcement section. I think the first section can be struck, stricken.
So in other words, we would propose to create-
A new enforcement section-
Okay.
In the charter.
So we just leave out the one-word section?
Yes.
I have this wondering about that clarification, the explanation as to whether we are doing this upon recommendation of the Charter Review Committee, as opposed to, I mean, all of those are recommendations that we are following, what the Charter Review Committee is doing, as opposed to simply what we are doing.
Right. Because they're, they're a committee that reports to us, so we just, we're the ones who recommend a town meeting. They're going to give the presentation at town meeting. It won't be us, with the exception of the couple that we amended. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, so-
So I'd make that a motion as corrected.
Number 37, going to strike the word first, first section, okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would also like to strike the comma after Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Okay. I'll amend my motion as such.
It should be proposes, the board proposes, rather than propose.
Correct.
Proposes.
Put an S in there.
Okay. So let's take, take it from the top here again, okay? Because we modify the motion here a little bit more.
So I would make the motion as corrected.
Which correction?
In Article 20 of this warrant, the Board of Selectmen proposes to create a new enforcement section in the charter.
Okay. That sounds fine. So who's get the motion? You, Pat, now?
I just read it. No, somebody else made the motion.
I thought I made the motion.
You did.
It's your motion. It is Pat's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Any, any other corrections on, on the written recommendations?
Article 41, the recommendation on the last sentence, I'm not sure, maybe it's just a, again, another comma that I don't like, but I'm a little confused on the last sentence. That the WTOP met weekly over the summer, and continues to narrow by consensus all, I've been doing tons of editing this weekend, and so I'm still stuck in that mode. I believe what we're doing is continuing to narrow the options for the town to address this very important matter.
I like that, and continues to narrow the options, yeah, and leave all the other stuff out.
Jill, did you, someone write these down? Jill, did you-
I, I apologize, I didn't get the full gist of that.
I'm just trying to, I like the idea of keeping the, somehow putting the consensus of all the involved stakeholders in the sentence, but by putting it after the narrow, continues to narrow, I think the sentence is very, would be very confusing to someone reading it.
So can you read the line, the whole line, the way we're going to have this?
I'm still working on that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I guess it would be cleaner to say, and continues to narrow the options for the town to address this very important matter, and you may just have to leave out the consensus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that, too. So you cross out, starting with by and ending with stakeholders, that whole phrase.
So by, starting with-
By consensus of all involved stakeholders, yeah.
Stakeholders, you deleted?
Mm-hmm. Continues to narrow the options.
Okay, so Doug, you gonna make that motion?
I'm going to make another little change also. I guess I would, for that whole sentence, the WTOP has been meeting weekly since-
They haven't been meeting regularly. Maybe you should say regularly, because it hasn't been really weekly recently. I mean, there were all those weeks that they didn't meet. You could say it's been meeting regularly.
Just, just regularly. Go ahead.
Does it really matter how much they've met? Just strike it and say the WTOP continues to narrow the options. This is an explanation. We don't need to write a book about it.
True.
So just strike the met weekly over the summer and, and say the WTOP continues to narrow the options for the town to address this very important matter.
Okay, so who'd like to frame this?
Well, let me read that again. The WTOP continues to narrow the options for the town to address this very important matter.
Okay, so that's your motion.
Well, I guess that's my motion.
I'll pass on to Mr. Tottenham.
Okay, so, so that you just seconded it, then, right?
Yes, I did.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.
On Article 42, I think we might need a different recommendation on that one. I just think it is, that was the one asking us, asking the town to shut down the turbines.
Ah, yes.
And I'm not sure the, our previous recommendation really addresses the reasons why we are recommending indefinite postponement on that.
Could I make a suggestion? My sense is, and it may not be the, the approach the board would prefer to take, but that this proposal is inconsistent with the support for the consensus-building process, which, which the board has advocated, and which has, is well underway.
Well, again, since Article 41's recommendation was only a three to two, but Article 42 was a five to zero, I feel a little bit awkward having put that wording in when we weren't in complete agreement on Article 41's recommendation. I think the implications of shutting down the wind turbines at the time of the town meeting are vast, and, you know, from a financial point of view, we don't have the ability to do so without changing the budget.
Then maybe that's the answer, the recommendation, or the explanation?
But I'm not sure that's the only reason we're not, I mean-
No, but perhaps addressing the, excuse me, the financial aspect somehow.
Well, certainly ceasing their operation would require the allocation of additional taxpayer resources in the FY13 budget. And that, that was represented from, from day one as one of the fundamental assumptions in the budget process for FY13.
Well, I think you'd also want to put something in there about the wind turbine options process, as well as the budget.
I would agree. I think to say that to turn them off right now would, I think, make the process harder for that committee to be working forward.
Right, because we came up with a, an operational plan that we thought was acceptable, whether it was acceptable to, it probably wasn't acceptable to either side. So-
And I guess what I would prefer is that the Board of Selectmen prefer to wait for the recommendations from the Wind Turbine Options Committee, or WTOP, before we proceed. And at this time, we cannot make an adjustment without, we cannot turn them out without also making a fiscal adjustment.
I like that. That sounds good. Can you write that down?
Sure.
I think you have to make a reference there to the, to the group, to the WTOP.
Right, you just, you're exactly-
Yeah, and that's what you said. And then say, and also, or whatever it was, that it would create a financial incon, well, I don't know, however you said it. I don't remember how you said it. Do you remember?
Appropriation would need to be made for the fiscal year 13 budget to cover the-
How about-
Oh, they always say there is no-
Financial implication to the fiscal year 2013 budget.
Yeah, it would have serious financial-
We're going to use the word hardship, I think, financial hardship for the town.
I'm not sure I want to even make that much judgment. Just, this, we can't pass this article because it would cost us money, and we don't have a appropriation earmarked for where that money's going to come from.
Doesn't have a funding source.
There's no funding, there you go, there's no funding source.
And so it's also with a hardship, we just don't have the money earmarked for it.
There is no funding source identified to address the financial shortfalls that would be created by implementing this article.
Right.
That's good. Yeah. Can you write that down quick?
Did you get that, June?
Sadly, I didn't get the entire-
Okay, let me say that again.
We've said 12 to him on this one, so he's-
Replay, replay the tape.
No, yeah, no funding source has been identified to address the financial shortfalls that would be created, or financial shortfall that would be created by the implementation of this article.
Or no funding source exists, maybe.
No funding source, well, we don't know that it doesn't exist, but it certainly hasn't been identified. So let me say it again. No funding source has been identified to address the financial shortfall that would be created by the implementation of this article.
Well, we also-
And-
And I would actually put, I would prefer to have that be the second one. I'd prefer to have the first one be, to implement this article would, the Board of Selectmen would prefer to wait for the recommendations of the WTOP before making their decision on-
Regarding the operational turbines.
Regarding the operation of the turbines.
That's a good way.
And-
Yeah, initially you said await recommendations of WTOP process prior to acting. Would you want to, instead of prior to acting, just say substitute, prior to moving forward on the matter of the wind turbines? Is that, just a little, the end of the phrase was slightly different as all.
Makes no difference to me.
How about prior to altering the current, current operational plan?
Right.
Okay.
The board.
So the Board of Selectmen prefers to await the recommendations of the WTOP process prior to altering the current operational plan.
Yep, and.
Yeah, wind turbine operational plan. Also, this, oh, also no funding source has been identified to address the financial shortfall that would be created by this proposed article.
Mm-hmm.
So that, those two sentences, that works.
So who's going to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, as the town manager has just read.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.
Article 49, again, I think it's just a typo. There's an extra clause stuck in the end of the explanation. That the town adopt Article 13 as printed. At least I'll write that in my copy.
Oh, okay. So it's Article 49 as printed.
I don't think we would have that. I think that was just, I think it was a cut and paste that actually has nothing to do with this article.
Right, take the whole line out.
Which one? Which one?
The last line.
Oh, the last line?
That the town adopt Article.
Oh, thirteen.
Incomplete sentence. So we take that whole sentence out?
Yep.
Yeah.
And that's almost.
Okay. So do I have a motion on that one?
So move.
Second.
With that change.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? The ayes have it.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman, was there, was there a vote on the changes in forty-two then? That was?
Yes, we did.
Did that happen?
Yep. Now, we're gonna go back to square one, because we just need to vote, I'm gonna go right down the list, and we can do it as a, as a group, Article five.
Excuse me, what about Article fifty-five?
Did you have some changes?
You had the last one?
Do you have some changes?
No, did we already vote that?
No, we haven't done any of the other ones, we only went to the ones people wanted corrected. Do you know?
Oh, I see, okay.
Right now, so we haven't done.
Oh, I see, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had, I had two others on the personnel-related articles, actually.
Okay.
That would be Articles twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Okay.
And if I may. Twenty, pardon me, Article twenty-eight. In the, in the, two items on, first of all, in the text of the article, it mentions a grade ten A, this is not in your recommendation, but we're going to include the salary range for that position, in other words, for creating a new proposed grade, but it did not include the hourly rate, so we would just automatically correct that, does not require the board's action, but however, in your.
It will change our recommendation to not as printed, but as recommend.
Yes, there's also, my concern in the explanation there is, you have to get to the last two sentences to determine what you're creating this position for, and so I think you may wanna add a sentence, in other words, it says, the, again, this is in Article twenty-eight, the M-ten A classification has a compensation range, so that clarifies it, or that further confirms it, and it could be as written, or you could go ahead and leave it as it is, but however, there's no sentences, I think you should consider adding sentences that says, a second sentence, it is intended to apply to the newly proposed position of Deputy Director of Public Works.
Period.
So that makes it clear.
And take all that other stuff out, yeah, that's a whole lot of mumbo jumbo.
Well, the stuff that comes later justifies why you have to create a ten A, because ten includes some positions supervised, and eleven includes the director, so that is what, we feel compelled us to responsibly create a ten A, and that's explained in the last two sentences, but it doesn't give the direct confirmation as to who you're creating this for, and if you'd consider adding that second sentence, that would, so, that would make it clarified pretty quickly, so that's, that's the reason I raise that, for your consideration.
So could you read the?
Yeah, I'd be happy to read that a second time. Again, it's adding a new sentence, number two, that just would say, it is intended to apply to the newly proposed position of Deputy Director of Public Works, period. And I'd make one other change in the following sentence, where it says, the ten A determination is based upon a review and evaluation, that's how it's worded, of the job duties of this new position, N-E-W, I just add the word new, so again, it's clear what we're talking about here. If somebody's wondering, well, who else is the ten A gonna apply to at this point, it created solely for this position, and not advocating it be used.
Do you really need that last sentence?
The ML classification.
No, the existing M-ten classification currently includes da-da-da-da-da, and then the ML, by contrast, I mean, is that really necessary? I don't think people understand it, do you?
I think it's suggesting that the ten A is an intermediate classification for people that he, he or she is going to supervise, but also lower than the person who's supervising him.
Yeah, I think those lines are needed.
Otherwise, we wouldn't need it.
Okay.
But my question is, what's printed in the warrant doesn't have the salary hour, the salary range in it?
In its, in its current draft form, it doesn't, does not include the hourly rate, so, I actually have the warrant here, and we would just be routinely adding that.
We, we don't, we don't always necessarily put dollar amounts in the article, we put it in the recommendation.
But the, I thought you were suggesting that the, dollar amount was gonna be in the article.
I was just suggesting that we put it, you probably don't have a copy of your, the warrant article just says, add new grade ten A, and then while the explanation deals with it, it's not really up.
And it hasn't gone to press yet, so we can put that.
Correct, that's a minor change.
Okay.
But I think it would.
That's fine.
So can be as printed, then?
Yes, correct.
So we're looking for two motions here, one to change the actual article, which would put the, the actual, you know, salary range, so that's first motion.
Okay, I move adding the salary range to the actual Article twenty-eight, thirty-seven seventy-five to fifty-nineteen.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. So then, the second motion would be to change the explanation as outlined by Mr. Suso.
So move.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Rather than me go back through and read every article, how about I just get a motion to approve the remainder of the articles?
Mr. Chairman, I still have Article twenty-nine, I apologize.
Oh, okay.
It's another personnel-related one. I apologize for continuing to interrupt you. This is, this one's a little, it's less significant, but I think important. Again, under explanation for Article twenty-nine, talks about the town's governmental structure, and there's a word that was inadvertently omitted, where it talks about the second-in-command position, that's in the second sentence, within, it should say, such a large end of department, the word S-U-C-H should be added between within and a, in that second sentence.
Within such, take out the word a and put in the word such.
Within, yeah, leave a in there, just say such a. So just add the word S-U-C-H, and then continuing in the next, in the next sentence, it says, all have year-round responsibility, twenty-four hours, and it says as day, it should be per day.
Oh, per day.
So as should be per, so delete as and add P-E-R for per day. And another item would be, that talks about, let me see which sentence that is, the sentence that starts with, this is an extraordinary organizational weakness, I'm suggesting you just put a period there and delete this phrase that says, which becomes even more glaring with time.
Yeah.
I think that's unnecessary, if the board so concurs, and.
I would actually prefer getting rid of that whole sentence.
Yeah, it's, it's a negative.
Yeah.
I think, I think the argument you've made with me, or you, or we have made before that, is strong enough that you don't need to.
And could I make one other suggestion?
So let's stay, stay one focus there, we gonna delete the whole line first?
Which?
The one that starts with, this is an extraordinary organizational, and ends with time, that whole sentence would go away.
Okay, okay, now you can go to the next issue, Julia.
Yeah, and lastly, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, you recall, one of the things that's not in here, but it's consistent with it, that is what I brought up tonight, where I talked about deleting the management position at the same one, time one is created, so organizationally, it has a neutral effect. We haven't said that in here, but I brought that up tonight, and I think it would be an important message, if the board would so consider, and, and that is, the message that's actually in my town manager's report, and I'll just touch on if I may, that, that says, to delete the vacant existing position and replacing it with a new position in public works, organizationally has a neutral effect as to the total management positions within DPW, so that, if the board would like to have that sentiment included, I think it would.
And the only question with that is, I think it might entice argument at town, town meeting with disagreement, because folks would know the Assistant Superintendent of the Parks Department position is not gonna be the same as this Deputy Director of the Department of Public Works.
Right, it's not a co-equal, yeah.
Right, so.
It's a good point.
I mean, we've deleted it out there in the public eye, we could have that as a discussion. What's the board's thoughts?
You mean, deleting that sentence, this article would both create?
No, no, he wanted to.
Just not including what I raised.
Not, he, he raised another issue, about the, what's the term you used?
A neutral.
A neutral.
Yeah, in other words, it leaves it organizationally neutral, because you're adding a management position, but also deleting one, but as Chairman's pointed out, they're not identical positions, you know, they have slightly different management capacities, so, you know, it could raise that question, and it's not really germane in any case, so, being silent on it is not a problem for me.
Well, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna say that they're apples to apples.
Right.
I mean, if we wanted to say that we've deleted another position, another management position, just leave it at that, that's fine, but it's up to the board.
But of course, that's, that's consistent with the article, it says, add one, delete another, so.
Yeah.
It is, it is pretty straightforward, as you note, and wouldn't necessarily need to be said.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind adding a phrase that refers to the article in Springtown meeting that I think this responds to, and the recommendation of the Solid Waste Management Committee for the past ten years, that we have additional management of the solid waste.
It's good to call.
He's got in there, fundamental responsibility, the proposed deputy position will be to, to be the manager of the town's solid waste and recycling, maybe you could put in, as recommended by Springtown meeting two thousand.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's, yeah, that's good, that's enough.
Right.
Okay, so just rather than put another sentence in?
It's exactly that same.
Oh, okay, all right. So Spring two thousand and twelve town meeting.
Okay. I have nothing more to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, to adopt those recommendations, that recommendation as amended?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second. Colonel has the ball.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Any other corrections? So I look for a motion to accept all of the other recommendations as outlined by Assistant Town Manager Harper?
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it. Okay.
Thank you.
Next up would be approved request for one-day liquor license, casual gourmet, just for disclosure purposes, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. So do I have a motion to approve, this is for a one-day license at Highfield Hall?
I had a question on both of them.
We'll do one at a time.
Okay, well, it's the same question.
Okay, okay.
Maybe I'm just not remembering the liquor licenses. They're both for sale, liquor, does there need to be something in the provision about whether they've gone through the TIPS program, or?
No, but we can recommend that, there is one, there's one scenario, just for your information, because neither of these are actually for nonprofits, they're being, the ones being issued to a caterer, can only be a wine and malt.
Okay.
So it couldn't be a full liquor unless, unless it was issued to an actual nonprofit, but if you'd like to make a motion.
No, I just, Julia, my question was that one, I couldn't remember if we had seen that before as a stipulation for sale of.
We've never done that on a one-day license.
Okay, thank you.
But if you'd like to, that's, okay, so you make a motion to approve?
Casual gourmet seasonal license.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? The ayes have it.
I'd also move approval.
I gotta make a disclosure, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license, this is for two, two days?
Yes.
Two days.
Yes, two one-day licenses, actually. Okay, you know, you can make the motion.
Approval for the two one-day liquor licenses for the Master Singers by the Sea event at the St. Thomas Hall.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close? The ayes have it. Next up is, we did, we're done with everything then on the summary of actions, there is only one, one item that I would like to bring up, number seven, we voted to affirm the appointment of the Finance Committee representatives to the Capital Advisory Committee, so now the committee is fully formed. I'd like to leave it to maybe the two selectmen's representatives to organize the first meetings of this committee. I know that your schedules are probably a little bit more cumbersome, so if you can get a hold of the committee and, and go ahead and start the process, it would be wonderful. And the town manager, of course, is gonna have representatives at those meetings.
Yes.
The new finance director, but it would be, i.e., the town manager or assistant town manager. Okay, next up would be individual selectman reports, I do have a, well, do you wanna go, let's go through the town manager's report, go ahead, this, sir.
Oh, certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple items. I returned earlier this week, this, this past week from the ICMA's annual conference for professional municipal managers. The conference was both educational and insightful, and it was an excellent opportunity to review and discuss cutting-edge issues with other municipal managers. Thank you to the board for the opportunity to attend this important annual conference, I do appreciate that very much. I also want to acknowledge that Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper was recognized and honored by her colleagues in ICMA for completing her term as an ICMA Executive Board Member representing the Northeast. My congratulations and compliments to Heather for her excellent professional service in so ably representing the interests of New England area managers as well. Also, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we are completing the flooring replacement, the rubber flooring installation in the offices of Veteran Services and Conservation Commission in the lower level of Town Hall. These offices were temporarily relocated to a Town Hall Conference Room, and they will be returning to their longstanding locations later during this, same, this present week. I wanna thank all staff members for their cooperation during this process, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, next up, we'll go to individual selectman reports, I have a couple of issues that I'd like to talk to the board about, one is that, as the board remembers, the board voted to request the school building committee to fund an RFP for, and in, in audit of the high school building project.
Pass those.
The signature's. High school building project, the, the school building committee was a little reluctant to fund the article, to fund the, the RFP at this time, until they consult with our town council, as well as the council that was hired for, hired by and worked with the school building committee, because they believe there are some vulnerabilities in any reports of some settlements that were made during the process. So that is supposed to occur between now and the next meeting of the school building committee, and they'll take the item up at the next school building committee meeting as well. So I just keep the board abreast of what's going on, I've notified the town manager that the town council needs to get together with the chairman of the building committee and, as well as their council. Couple of other issues, I attended along with Selectman Flynn and Selectman Dr. Jones, I'm starting to go boopy here, the selectman and council's meeting at, in Sandwich this past Friday, it was well-attended, and it was very insightful about the ramifications of passing the article on the ballot in regard to the, the usage of medical marijuana, and the impacts that it would have on local government. I did wanna bring up a couple of things that, one is that the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, ten thousand dollar raffle is this week, it, it's an event that helps fund a lot of the local tourism, and I just wanted to give them a plug while I had an opportunity. Open up the other selectman's reports? Nope?
Yeah, Doug and I attended the MMA meeting in Hyannis.
That's right, that was week before.
Last week, and, and then tomorrow, Wednesday night is the open meeting law, the Attorney General's holding an open meeting law educational session at the Barnstable High School, I think it begins at five-thirty on Wednesday, so, and the, and the, the WTOP is meeting Tuesday, isn't that right, this week, tomorrow night? Yeah, okay, so that won't conflict with attending the open meeting. So that won't conflict with attending the open meeting law meeting.
Any other issues? Anyone else have anything to report? Reminded that next Monday, we have a Selectman's meeting, and on Tuesday of next week, we have the joint meeting with the planning board. I believe you've been emailed a template of what the agenda would be, and if not, we'll get that out to you folks. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than 90 years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, 548-0116, or puritancapecod.com.